Good evening and welcome to the May 9th, 2019 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I would like to thank one of our students, Brandon Fosky, who's a 12th grade student at the Tall Oaks High School for the introduction to the board meeting this evening. It says Tall Oaks, was Gwen Park, from Gwen Park, so Gwen Park, Brandon. Before Brandon begins, I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices that you may have because they may interfere with the microphones and the taping of our meeting. Brandon, please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Fosky. I'm a senior at Gwen Park High School. I participated in many clubs and organizations such as the PGCPS, Honorsman, and various cooking competitions. I've been able to maintain a 3.6 GPA while doing so. Some of my hobbies include cooking and playing my French horn. My long-term goal is to become a chef and restaurant owner. While competing in the C-CAP cooking competition, I managed to win the second place title along with a full scholarship worth of $128,364 to attend. I'll be attending Johnson Wells in the fall of 2019. I'm a proud... (applause). Thank you. I'm a proud senior at Gwen Park High School and I'm ready for my next stop in my prosperous future. Now, I will welcome you to the May 9th, 2019 Prince George's County Board of Education meeting. Highlights this evening will include the news break signing off. Additionally, under the Consent Agenda, the Board of Education will acknowledge Observation of National Caribbean American Heritage Month, National Charter School Week, May 12th through the 18th, 2019, and Building Services Personal Appreciation Week, May 20th through the 27th, 2019. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the May 9th, 2019 Board of Education meeting will begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon, and know how very proud the Board of Education is of you, all the students at Gwen Park and our school system. Thank you, sir. Ms. Eubanks, would you please now lead us in the board prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance?
It would be my honor. "Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding." Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, Ms. Eubanks. Now, Ms. Tate, would you please call the row?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Ms. Ahmed.
Present.
Ms. Boozer Struthers.
Present.
Mr. Burrows.
Present.
Ms. Eubanks.
Present.
Mr. Montero. Mr. Murray. Ms. Page.
Present.
Ms. Queen. Ms. Shepherd.
Present.
Mr. Thomas. Mr. Valentine. Mr. Wallace. Ms. Williams.
Here.
Dr. Thornton.
Here. Thank you very much. And now for a point of personal privilege, Mr. Burrows.
Colleagues, just want to recognize my 5th grade teacher. I see him in the audience. Mr. Pryor, please stand. Thank you so much for coming.[249.01][249.01](applause). He taught us many, many lessons, but one of the most important lessons that I learned from him was to be very competitive. And if our class ever lost kickball to another class, there was extra homework. So, (laugh) I appreciate yous though sincerely, and it's an honor that you're here during Teacher Appreciation Week. I know you're an administrator down, but thank you for what you did for all of our students at Hillcrest Heights.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pryor. And, Mr. Pryor, would you please give me your personal phone number in the event that I might need your...[282.12][282.12](laugh) Please, please. Colleagues, please note the following amendment to tonight's agenda. Item 6.7, Under Budget Consent Agenda, has been added to the evening's agenda. I will now receive a motion to adopt the agenda for May 9th. It's proper to move and second it that the agenda as modified be adopted, seeing no discussion of that. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. Please now, colleagues, turn your attention to the approval of our minutes from April 25th. A motion is in order to approve the minutes. It's proper to move and second it that the board approves its minutes of April 25th. Hearing no discussion of that or amendments to the minutes, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. Colleagues, just a brief comment from me as Chair. I was...I joined Mr. Wallace, our board colleague, at William Baines Elementary School today. And, Dr. Golson, I just want to say that your community partnership initiative is flowering. It was quite evident today, as Heart of America and Keller Williams Properties were present to build out the library space for our children. So, please, continue the work that you're doing. It's having great, great results. It was evident there. The principal there, the community, they were sprucing up the school, and it was just a good moment for Prince George's County. And I was pleased, and I'm sure it'll be in your report, Dr. Golson, but I have to steal some of your thunder. The Teacher of the Year event that you represented us at, and I was pleased to join our Vice Chair and Mr. Montero to represent the board at that event. It was a grand event, and we want to say to all of our teachers how much we value you and what you do for our school system. I do want to announce for the public, and it will be posted, the great work of the Board of Education in restructuring itself so that we can better deliver our services on behalf of our students and our staff and the community. We're very proud of the new committee structure that we have to manage the work of this Board of Education. So, I want to take two seconds to announce the structure of our new committees. We have three major committees of this board. And with the board itself as a collective, those three committees will now do the work of this board, and it'll be publicly visible to you. We have an Academic Achievement Committee, and the board agreed with me, and I appointed Mr. Paul Montero to chair that committee. And thank you, in his absence, to chair that committee. And joining him would be Ms. Eubanks. Thank you for your service. Ms. Shepherd, thank you for joining that committee. And Ms. Page, your replacement will represent you, but you're on that committee until you leave us, as the student member. And Ms. Sonia Williams on that committee. So, that committee will handle the academic achievement matters for our school district on behalf of the board. The second committee is the Policy and Governance Committee, and that committee is chaired by Ms. Ahmed. Thank you for your willingness to chair that committee, colleague. Ms. Boozer Struthers is a member of that committee as Vice Chair of the committee. Mr. Thomas, as Chair of the board, I will serve on that committee. And Ms. Page, you also will be on that committee, or your replacement. The final committee that's hard at work already, Dr. Golson, with your staff, is our Budget Committee. That committee is chaired by Mr. K. Alexander Wallace. And Mr. Burrows will serve as Vice Chair of that committee. And Ms. Queen is a member, and Mr. Valentine and Mr. Murray. But thank all of you colleagues for your willingness to work on these important committees. Those committees will be assisted by liaisons representing Dr. Golson, and thank you for appointing people to be on those committees. And those committees will also be staffed and assisted by our new Executive Director, which should announce publicly that our Executive Director of the board will arrive on Monday and will be available to the board and to the community starting on Monday. Ms. Susan King, unanimously selected by this Board of Education to join us to add to the efficiency of our operations. So, we're all looking forward to her joining us. Our next focus will be on our three major advisory councils that advise this board on major issues. And so, we'll now turn our attention to staffing those up, getting those operational. Our Parent Community Advisory Council, and our Minority Business Enterprise Council, and our Ethics Council. So, you'll see announcements about that at our next meeting. Thank you very much. And, Dr. Golson, that is my report, and I'll now ask for your report as our CEO, or interim CEO. Dr. Golson?
Yes, I'm actually going...we skipped the news break.
Okay.
So, we'll have the news break first, and then I'll do my remarks.
Sorry about that. News break, then.
Whether they were playing musical chairs, running relay races in graduation gowns, or showing off their hoopster skills, the seniors at Eleanor Roosevelt High School were celebrating the imminent end of their high school careers with what has become an annual event called Senior Signing Day. Started by former First Lady Michelle Obama in 2015, seniors in Prince George's County, along with millions more across the country, held up signs and wore collegiate jerseys to proudly proclaim their post-secondary intentions. You're going to the Navy?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you're going to the Naval Academy. Tell me, is this a dream come true?
Yes, sir. It's a dream come true. I've wanted to go to the Naval Academy for as long as I can remember. My first memory, one of my first big memories is seeing my dad come back into port in Connecticut. He was a submariner.
Wow. Once you get commissioned, you could be an officer. Do you see making the Navy your career?
Yes, sir, the Marine Corps. I want to go into the Marine Corps.
Marine Corps. All right. Nice talking to you, young man. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Where are you headed?
Georgetown.
Georgetown. Why Georgetown?
I think it's a great school, number one. They have a great business program. That's what I want to go into. And I really love the DC environment. I love that city, so that's why I chose Georgetown.
Yeah. There is perhaps no greater compliment to a Prince George's County public school education than students wanting to return the favor, coming back as teachers themselves or even school board members. Are you going to be a TURB?
Yes, I am.
Wow. What do you want to major in?
I'm majoring in Music Education and Jazz Studies.
Yeah. And with a thought to do what?
Be a music teacher in Prince George's County, hopefully.
So, we could get you back here?
Yes, you can.
Wow. That says a lot. So, you must think you got a great education here if you want to make this your life's work.
Yeah, all of my music teachers have been phenomenal ever since I was in elementary school, up until now. My band teacher, Ms. Zephyr, really helped me.
Did you imagine that your life would be as it has turned out to be?
Absolutely not. And that's the amazing thing. When you get an excellent education, you have the potential to do whatever you want. You know, I originally wanted to be a doctor. As you can see, I'm not a doctor today. I ended up becoming a middle school teacher after I graduated. And then, I currently recruit teachers, and now I get to make decisions that affect teachers and students throughout Prince George's County.
So, musical chairs are an apt metaphor for life's challenges after high school, even if you're facing them with a twin going to the same school. It is worth listening to those who have been in your shoes not that long ago and found a comfortable seat on the other side. What advice would you give all of them?
I would say to everyone, the important thing is to keep your feet moving. You know, it's okay to not know exactly what's next. It's okay to be uncertain about what comes beyond that next step, even if you're ready for that. So, I think the important thing is to keep your feet moving and to make sure that everything you're doing is with purpose. And as long as you keep that as your main focus, then you're going to be just fine.
Congratulations to all the seniors for signing off on one chapter of their lives and boldly setting off on the next. This is Dave Zarin reporting.
Now, Dr. Golson, we'll hear from you, please.
Thank you. Good evening and happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Last weekend, we announced our new 2019 Teacher of the Year, Angelica Brooks, who's a Coral Director at Bowie High School. Ms. Brooks was selected from a pool of 24 nominees to serve in this role. Joel Dean Rosas, an ESOL teacher from Cooper Lane Elementary School, was runner-up. Kelly Burgess, an Abbott teacher at Dwight D. Eisenhower Middle School, and who was featured on NBC4 and Telemundo 44 this morning. Katrina Davis, from Judy P. Hoyer Montessori School, who's a general education teacher. And Christine Gilead Arthur, who is a physical education, health teacher, and athletic director at the International High School at Langley Park, were finalists. In the eyes of their students, all of our nominees are Teachers of the Year. Thank you to our event sponsors for contributing approximately $60,000 in funds and in-kind services. Please visit the Teacher of the Year webpage for a list of all the nominees and sponsors. This morning, we had the pleasure of celebrating the 43rd Annual Student Built House Dedication Ceremony. Built by students in our Construction Trades Program, the house is the culmination of their combined efforts during the course of the school year. Congratulations, and thank you to teachers and partners who worked with students on this year's project. The house was sold and funds...the house will be sold, and funds raised will support next year's project. If you're in the market for a quality-built new home, please check out 7804 Lesby's Turn in Brandywine, Maryland. Congratulations to our student athletes who took part in the most recent Robert Janis Spring Games, held in partnership with Special Olympics. This annual event is made possible by our amazing teachers and volunteers who worked with students for weeks leading up to this event to help them excel in the Olympic sport of their choice. Thank you to everyone who made this year's Inspirational Games a success. Thank you to all of the Board of Education members that attended a variety of events last week, such as College Signing Day, our first-ever Career Signing Day, Tulip Grove Elementary School Dedication, Teacher of the Year Event, Special Olympics, or Growing Green with Pride Day at one of our schools. The countdown to graduation has begun. Find out when and where your school's graduation will take place, read student success stories, and view graduation photo galleries on our new Future Ready: Achieving Excellence webpage. You can visit it at www.pgcps.org/futureready. This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson. We will now proceed to our Public Comments section of tonight's meeting. And the first speaker is the Honorable Joanne C. Benson, who's a leader of our Senate delegation in Annapolis. Senator Benson, if you would please come forward, and thank you for taking the time out of your busy schedule to come speak to the board tonight. Evening. Make sure your mic is on. Make sure your mic is on, Senator Benson.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's a wonderful evening. I am the Chair of the Prince George's County Senate Delegation. We have in the Senate eight members, and it has really been a joy for me to work with them this year. I'm also an educator of over 50 years. Most of my life has been spent here in Prince George's County, in the Prince George's County Public Schools. I want all of you in this room to know how much I love the Prince George's County Public Schools. One of the reasons why I decided to go to Annapolis, Maryland, was because of the Prince George's County Public Schools, the senior citizens, the veterans, the disabled, and the working people. But at the top of the list are our children. I want to begin this conversation by thanking Dr. Golson. I want to thank Dr. Thornton. As many of you know, Dr. Thornton and I have been friends for over 30 years, and we have been through the thick and the thin of this Prince George's County Public Schools. We were here when schools integrated. We've been through some tough times. As a matter of fact, we served on several committees, and because we didn't agree with some of the things that they said, they dismanned several of the committees. Dr. Thornton and Dr. Golson are chiefly responsible for the money that you see coming back here to the Prince George's County Public Schools. I want you to know that they came down to Annapolis with the county executive, and they were there almost every day, talking to us about the need to fund the Prince George's County Public Schools. I want to commend them because, you know what? They were able to convince both sides of the aisle of the importance of funding our school system. And I really want to say, I really cannot tell you all how much that meant to us in Annapolis. Because you know, when you see representatives or people from Prince George's County in Annapolis advocating, not only for education, but for anything that this county needs, it helps us because we recognize that we cannot do the job by ourselves. And so, I want to thank you all for supporting this budget. You know you have a budget of $2.1 billion, which is an increase of $79.2 million, with an addition of $53.6 million, which is funding, which is receiving the funding under the current commission's blueprint for Maryland's future. Teacher retirement payments will total $1115.2 million, a $6.2 million increase from last year. Now, my wonderful friends on the school board, Dr. Thornton, and everybody who is a part of the school system, no foolishness. No foolishness, you all. Because I want you all to know that getting this money back to Prince George's County was not easy. We had to work hard down there to get the money back. And I want you all to understand that if you look at other counties, they're having issues. They're having problems. Let me assure you that I visit these counties. I visit these people. Don't read about it in the newspaper. We don't have time for that foolishness. Stay out of the newspaper. If we can't say anything positive about the Prince George's County Public Schools, please be quiet. Now, I said no foolishness because we work hard to bring this money back, and it's not for us. I could go home...a lot of people want me to go home. I'm not going home until I'm 104. I'm here. You all will have to put up with me until I'm 104. I will be working until I'm 104. Now, listen. We brought this money back for our children. Dr. Thornton, members of the school board, Dr. Golson, we want that money, most of that money, to go in the trenches, where we have teachers who are taking money out of their pocket to pay for children, for the needs of our children. We have teachers who are in the trenches, are working from can't see in the morning until can't see at night. We have administrators that are clearly, clearly committed to our children. And I want each of you all to understand the urgency of taking care of our children. There's absolutely no rhyme or reason why we are at the bottom of the pole when it comes to the academic achievement of our children here in Prince George's County.
Senator Benson, let me tell everybody that I dare not cut the senator off.
Please don't cut me off.
Because she...not because she's saying nice things about me, but because she's the source of my funding, so...
Okay, I'm going to finish here, and I'm going to finish here, and we should be able to go home about 10:30 tonight.[1373.83][1373.83](laugh)
So, I don't want the other speakers to expect the same.
But let me just talk...I hope you all get the message of why it is important for us to take care of our children and stop the foolishness. We don't have time for it. We have to take care of our baby children. They are our prized possession, and if we don't take care of our children, we don't have to worry about a future because there won't be one. Now, Sootland, Sootland High School. Now, we're hearing some things down in Annapolis that several of our wonderful senators are interested in not having Sootland High School on the drawing board. We've been working hard to ensure that Sootland stays on the drawing board. Children from all over Prince George's County come to Sootland High School. We want Sootland High School to stay on the drawing board. We want it to move forward. I've already talked to the senators. I've talked to one in particular, and I've informed him, no foolishness. And when I say no foolishness, I really mean no foolishness. We want Sootland High School to stay on the drawing board, Mr. Chair, Dr. Golson, members of the school board. We want Sootland High School built. We've waited and waited and waited. And if you don't think that Sootland High School is...a new school is needed, go to Annabelle Ferguson. Go over there. Go over there to that auditorium and try to sit on one of those chairs. It's a mess. And we're talking about a wonderful school where we have educators in there that are top of the line. We have some of the best and the brightest, and it's unbelievable how they produce students that travel all over the world, you know? And I could talk on and on about what they do at Sootland High School, but I could talk about what they do at many of our schools because I'm busy visiting. I can tell you about most of the schools in the county, having spent 40 years of my life in the school system, and I'm still not tired. I'm still running around in schools. The second is Fairwood. Fairwood needs to be built. It's overcrowded. There's a problem out there. We need you to come to think about putting Fairwood Elementary School. We've got the land. We've done the study. We need to put Fairwood on the drawing board. But let me go back and reemphasize the importance of keeping Sootland High School on the drawing board. We need that high school. We need Sootland High School to stay on the forefront and not another school somewhere else that's coming here as Johnny come lately. We can't have it. I'm asking you all, as the Chair of the Prince George's County Senate Delegation, you all need...you all will need my help. I need your help. I want you all to please make it your business to keep Sootland High School on the drawing board. And don't forget about the fact that we want to use this money to benefit our children, to work with our teachers and our principals, those who are in the trenches. So, thank you all very much. I want you all to know that there is not a day gone by that I don't pray for you. Now, I hope that I don't have to come back down here with my anointing oil to help you all out. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.[1580.13][1580.13](applause). Thank you so much, Senator Benson, and when I come to Annapolis, you'll give me the same courtesy, I hope.[1588.83][1588.83](laugh) Our next speaker, we deeply appreciate you, Senator Benson, in all seriousness. The next speaker is Danielle Peterson, who's a student at Turning Point Academy. If you're here, please come forward. See a number of our young people coming forward.
Hello, everyone. My name is Danielle Peterson. I'm nine years old, and I go to Turning Point Academy Public Charter School. While I'm there, I learn about my unique potential, and I want to talk about a new club here at Turning Point Academy that came out last year. It's a poetry class. I want to talk about that because I love to write. And one of my poems there I wrote was "Unforgettable Birthday." Whoever's birthday is in May, this poem is for you. And mine is May 11th, which is on Saturday, so yeah. "Unforgettable Birthday." Let me begin. "I'm wishing you a birthday you never will forget. A day packed full of pleasure, your very best birthday yet. And when your birthday's over, I'm wishing quite sincerely the happiness and joy and fun with all your birthdays yearly."[1661.01][1661.01](applause). My next poem is "Life Madness." "When will all this madness cease? Where is free time? Where is peace? I'm running, doing, till I drop. Give me buttons, pause, meet, stop." And my last poem is "I Love You." "I wrote your name in the sky, but the wind blew it away. I wrote your name in the sand, but the waves washed it away. I wrote your name in my heart, and forever it will stay."[1695.23][1695.23](applause). And I'm going to talk about my school...my school average. For reading, I got low expectations for school average, district average, and country average. For writing, I got met expectations for school average, district average, and state average. And for overall, I met all expectations. Now, Nation Maddie Gable will talk about a high charter school.
Hello, my name is Nation Maddie Gable. I'm 10 years old. I'm in the 4th grade, and I go to Turning Point Academy Public Charter School. I'm going to be talking about the high culture. The high culture is basically the presentations that we do here at TPA. Also, the...I'm also going to be talking about the presentation. The presentations we do is...we have our word, which is courage, for this month of May, which the 4th grade is doing. The 2nd graders did conscience last month, and I thought it was going to be about the devil and the angel, but it was about Pinocchio, Jiminy Cricket, and the fox. But overall, that you need to follow...you need to have courage and follow your conscience to keep the high culture and the present and Turning Point Academy Public Charter School up.
Thank you.[1789.83][1789.83](applause). Are you Karen? You're not. What's your name?
Chimalu Dujie.
I'm sorry?
Chimalu Dujie.
Okay, which one is Karen? Okay, which one is Karen? Is Karen here? Please proceed. Please go ahead.
Hello, my name is Timulud Dujie. I'm ten years old. I go to, I'm in the fourth grade. I go to Turning Point Academy Public Charter School. I get honor roll every quarter. One of the topics I'll be talking about is the performances we have at our school. So, what we do, we have, we have a character word and you could do dances, speeches, steps, and more. The fourth grade's character word is care, courage, and we're doing dances, steps, speeches. So, before you shut the school down, you should come and experience the fun things we do here. So, and yeah, I love TPA. TPA has come to, come to stay, and goodbye.
Thank you. Now, what's your name?
Kamala.
You Kamala. What's your last name?
Mike Johnson.
Um, don't see your name on the list, but, uh, no one's gonna get upset with me here. You're all so impressive. Uh, please proceed.
Hello, my name is Kamala Mike Johnson. I'm eleven years old. I'm in fifth grade and I go to Turning Point Academy Public Charter School. Today, we're going to be talking about some bad things about TPA and how we can fix it. So, one bad thing about TPA is that sometimes the bathrooms are dirty and we could fix that by having the janitors come in the bathroom after a class used the bathroom. And another bad thing is that sometimes sub-sub, substitute teachers are mean and ruining disrespectful to some students. So, we can fix that by talking to, to substitute teachers and telling them to treat others the way that you want to be treated. And also, it takes courage to do what's, say what's, do what's wrong and fix it. So, please don't close down. TPA is a high potential charter school.
We love TPA.
And we love you all. Thank you. Now, uh, did I miss Miss Karen Sutherland, Miss Sutherland in the audience? I'm sorry? Oh, oh, teacher, okay. Please come forward.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
My name is Karen Sutherland, and I'm speaking here this evening in order to support the final recommendation made by the site review team. The site review team offers the following recommendations to the chief executive officer. The school should remain open and non-renew the contract with Turning Point Acad, I'm sorry, Turning Point Foundation LLC with PGTPS managing the school for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year with the intent of seeking another management organization with the parent and teacher involvement, a part, as part of this process. I have a connection to Turning Point Academy in two different capacities. First and foremost, as a grandparent, and two, as an employee for the past eight years. My involvement with Turning Point has allowed me to witness the lack of participation by the TPA's governing board and executive director, over, the executive director's overall performance by using the E E M O staircase in reverse order. The E E M O is a rubric for overall character evaluation and measuring, measuring tools for, for effort and attitude used by Hyde schools. I will now give you the letter grade for each step. I gave it my all. Overall grade is an E. I'm doing my best. Overall grade is an E. Hey, I can do this. Overall grade is an E. Hey, how did you do this? Overall grade is an E. I'll do it if you make me under duress. Overall grade is an E. I can't do it. I don't want to look dumb. Overall grade is an E. I won't do it. You can't make me. Overall grade is an A plus plus. In conclusion, myself and the majority of the Turning Point Academy staff strongly agree with the site review's team's final recommendation to allow Turning Point Academy to remain open and non-renew the contract with Turning Point Foundation LLC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. The next speaker is Lisa Cash, also, she's vice chair of the board of Turning Point Academy. No, I did that because that's school maintenance and I want to stay with Turning Point Academy. Um, Ms. Cash, if you'll come forward, please.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's, uh, very sobering that I have to follow one of our teachers who is so dissatisfied with our school because it does not represent the kind of school that we have. We believe that every individual has a unique potential and we invest a lot of time and energy into building a culture that fosters the development of that unique potential. We understand that there have been some difficulties over the past few years and we have made great strides to address those. We have turned over almost our entire board this past year. And whereas that may not be a totally uncommon situation, in our case, it's a little extra because of the character culture that we build into our school. There's an extra learning curve for those new board members who have to understand what it is we're trying to accomplish and how it is we're trying to accomplish that. We spent a lot of time this last year bringing on new board members who can help us achieve our goals. We felt that the site visit that we had in March was really designed to set us up for failure, if I can be completely honest. We were not allowed to present any of our data or any of our reports. And the questions that were asked of us felt that they were designed to poke at the weaknesses and not even look at the strengths. When we compare ourselves to other charter schools in the county that have received five-year renewals, we're baffled at why we are having such a hard time getting our renewal because we compare favorably to those charter schools. And that's despite the fact that we have a overwhelming proportion, seventy-two percent, of farm students. And as you all are well aware, that cohort typically underprepared, underperforms compared to their peers. But our students are excelling and we surpass the county and the state and the country in some academic metrics. And that's not a coincidence. Now, it hurts my heart that we have a, a teacher that is so unhappy because our teachers are one of our best assets because they bought into the vision. We have much lower, uh, percentage of first and second year teachers because once our teachers get into the school, like the families when they get into the school, like the new board members when they come on board, they believe in the mission, they believe in the vision, and they want to stay to see it through. The one-year charter last year really hamstrung us because it kept us from being able to follow through on some of the plans that we had because of the instability that it represented and the uncertainty that trickled down throughout the entire community. Part of the frustration you hear tonight from the teachers is a part of that uncertainty. We're just tired of not being able to move forward with the things that we want to do. Um, I hope that you all will, uh, do your due diligence and look at the materials that we've sent you. We sent you our charter renewal. We've sent you a lot of data. And we just ask that you consider all the information before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cash. Um, the next speaker is Ms. Patricia Peterson from the Turning Point Academy. She's a principal founder. Ms. Peterson?
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
My name is Patricia Peterson. I'm the principal founder of Turning Point Academy Public Charter Schools. I am a parent. I'm a parent of seven children, five of which went to Turning Point Academy. I'm probably the only parent that stepped out and started a charter school with a vision and a mission um, to give to not only my children, but to other children a quality education. My children specifically, um, have done outstanding in Turning Point all of these years. Um, they have graduated, um, they have, their, their classes have been accepted by Bowie High School. My sixteen-year-old is going into a gifted, exceptionally gifted program where she can start college at sixteen years of age. My other daughter's in the three D scholar program at Bowie. And you just heard my youngest, in her writing skills exceeds both the state, the county, um, as well as the nation in her writing scores. So, when we designed the program, uh, we designed it so that the children could go after their unique potential. And what I mean by that is to help them understand that they have something that is unique about them, that they can get a hold of. And if they have their attitude and their effort behind that, they will excel. And so, as they begin to learn those things, we find that children who go to Turning Point, the cohort gets better and better. If you'll see, that the academics gets better and better. And so, our parents are excited about what Turning Point Academy does for our students. And we bring them, it's a school of choice for us because we want character education, but not the traditional character education where they just teach us words, but where they model character, where they inspire us to act in character. And so, it's, it's really interesting how the students can pick out, oh, the subs don't act like the regular teachers because they're not in the culture, and so they don't understand how student and teacher interaction takes place in a Turning Point Academy school. Every year, um, Turning Point Academy stood before this board and, and Prince George's County Public Schools, um, every renewal, we, we met our expectations. Every renewal, we did well and exceeded expectations. And everyone spoke highly of us. And we understand in the last year, three, the three years, it, it has not been the case as we try to. I was assigned to go work for the president, for President Obama, as well as for President Trump. And I was the director for weapons of mass destruction, as well as the National Economic Council. Because you see, I started on welfare. I had seven children, but you can also work for the president. I want my children to know that if you put your character forward, if you walk in some kind of integrity, you can actually do something in this world. And we are setting examples that are exemplary. I know, I spent time bringing on every new board member here and bringing people who are educated, who are doctors, um, who have, doctors of education, who have the expertise and the background. I guarantee you, as these people begin, if you give them time to work out the mission, they are going to inspire you. They are looking at facilities. They are putting programs in place for the future. Data across the board. They are designing a good program, and I thank you for your time. Appreciate all of you. And I do believe, they, I'm sorry, two seconds. They say that Maryland has the weakest charter school law. They say, oh, in spite of Prince George's County Public Schools we do this. I don't believe that. I believe our model with our Prince George's County, the way we do it, it can excel. And I bet you we can do better than any other county, the way we do it, if we work together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Opayemi, uh, AJ K, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Like to leave this in the trail. Um, my name is Opayemi Ajakar. I'm a parent at Turning Point, uh, Academy. And I'm now here to educate this honorable committee on the board action summary dated April twenty-fourth. Um, but I'd just like to speak to, uh, some of the recommendations as, uh, a concerned parent. I brought my kids to Turning Point Academy because of its character education program, which is, to the best of my knowledge, is in line with the purpose of the Maryland, uh, Public Charter School Program, which stated in part to establish alternative means within existing public school systems to provide additional innovative, uh, innovative learning opportunity and creative educational approach to improve the education of students. I've read that the first charter, uh, granted to public charter school in Prince George's County was to TPA by this honorable house, based on Hyde Character Course program, which is still, uh, evidenced today even at the school. I ask if this TPA board, I mean, if this TPA board, which formulated the school upon the principle of positive character, is dissolved and replaced with something other than what parents saw when they brought their kids to the school. Um, I don't know if that is in fact boosting the county's charter school status. Again, I think another concern of the county board is, uh, in not relocation of the school for, from its present location to the proposed South County or Middleton Village School. As a parent, I support that the TPA school be relocated to a very good place. However, there's no one here who would agree with, uh, would not agree with me. There are good things, doesn't come easily. They don't come easy at all. They are not cheap. And it comes with a whole lot of energy and effort put into them. So, in the past TPA board meeting that I've attended, as a parent and most of teachers attended, the board has outlined a struggle to obtain building inspection from the county. Many of us will understand that to assume occupancy of school for children, it will require a whole lot of electrical, mechanical, and so many other system certification which should be reviewed and should be in working condition. So, the school board route, uh, the school boss route, analysis and environmental studies, including water survey, also would need to be assessed and be in working condition. So, should I assume that because the car, the board has not received this inspection report from the county, that is why the charter school office is recommending non-renewal of this charter? Then, in conclusion, I just want to say that if TPA, uh, board is given the time to work with this charter school office and this honorable committee, I believe that we can continue to work to fulfilling the requirements set forth by this council. Thank you and have a blessed day.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Jeffrey Lund, also from Turning Point Academy. And if Michael Peterson would prepare to speak after Mr. Lund.
Hello. Um, actually, I'm with the Hyde Foundation and, um, I work with, uh, my name is Jeff Lund. I work with the Hyde Foundation. We support the implementation of the Hyde found, family-based character education uh, model used by TPA since its founding as a school. I have the pleasure of working with three other schools who are implementing the Hyde model and counting TPA. Our model serves twenty-four hundred students and parents in three states, New York, Florida, Maryland. I came to Woods, I came to work for Hyde as my family attended Hyde Woodstock in Connecticut. And the experience had a transformative impact on myself, my son, and my wife. I can tell you, it took me two years to get from an off-track father who was basically absent in his family uh, to become an excellent father who communicated with his son and, and modeled character. So, I do know a little bit about the E M O scale. Um, I was motivated to help expand the Hyde experience in charter and public schools, so I joined the Hyde Foundation. Uh, at Hyde, we specialize in working with schools in urban areas who have, uh, very often have a high population of students and receiving free or reduced meals and where students often come to school with skills below the grade levels in literacy and numeracy and, and sometimes with counterproductive family issues. Uh, we focus, as we've been saying, on, on the, on a, on a, a model of pet, pet, uh, of character potential and firmly grounded in a character involving students, parents, and teachers. We look beyond the teacher's, a child's weakness and failures to see their strengths. Um, the Hyde philosophy is, is that every individual is gifted with a unique potential and character leads a way to fulfilling a destiny. Adolescence is the time to teach children this deeper truth, the humility to ask for help and where the, uh, where the preparation for life becomes fused to how they will decide to live their lives. Parents are a key part of our program. The philosophy is, uh, home is the primary classroom and parents are the primary teachers. So, we work very hard with them in the program so that they understand that they can inspire their children to do better. And if they model character rather than speak about what to do, it has tremendous results. Off-track students with highly engaged parents at Hyde schools, um, um, parents who, what I'm trying to say is parents who have off-track students with, um, uh, parents that are not engaged have a GPA of about twenty, thirty percent less. I have to say, the teachers, um, working with them over the summer and the year, um, we had PD seminars, professional development in character. Um, and we feel that we could use more time with them, but we could see that they really did care for the children. Uh, the students, as we've talked about, uh, have, have been working in the character program. They have discovery groups, school meetings, the character programs right throughout the whole, uh, system. Um, my last remark would be that, uh, having worked with the board, I saw a reconstituted board. I love their energy, um, just like the board of. Just like the Board of Education, we have a lot of new members, and we're very proud of what we're achieving in progress. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Michael Peterson. Would you please come forward, sir?
Good evening, Prince George's County School Board. My name is Michael Peterson, as you know. I am one of the founders of Turning Point Academy, who has seen three daughters and my son attend Turning Point Academy. Due to the curriculum provided by high schools of Bath, Maine, and the teachers who instruct them, the children have excelled in their grades compared to similar schools within PG County. I know there were certain discrepancies concerning the TPA Board, but those discrepancies and people have been replaced. We are now a board that is ready to work with teachers, parents, and Prince George's County to fulfill the mission of growing TPA to a higher standard of learning for all who attend. I'm asking the Prince George's County School Board to please extend a five-year charter for TPA. A five-year charter will help us move the whole school within three years to a spacious building that we have located. The proprietor is willing to renovate and house the school. Please give us a five-year charter and watch these children, teachers, and parents come together in joy for a place they can call their own. I've spoken with those who run daily routine of caring for our children each day. Going forward, their voice will not be stifled. They are here to do the work that has helped so many of our graduates continue to press on and pursue their dreams. We are here and ready to, we are here and ready to make a whole fulfilling mandate to strive and persevere for TPA in Prince George's County. God bless us all. And I know TPA is a good school, I know they have good teachers, and even the leadership as far as the TPA Board is something that's very strong, and I believe in them. And I know they can do a good job. So I hope you keep the school open so that other children can actually see the vision that we have. And I'm leaving this with a lot of parents who signed in support of TPA.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Ms. Cassandra Selvin, also with the Academy. No, she's not here. Anitra Enguji is here. No, she's not here. Jeralis Stewart. Stewart, if you're here, please come forward. Is that Ms. Stewart getting up? Thank you so much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A body of men holding themselves accountable to nobody ought not to be trusted by anybody. Thomas Payne. Good evening. My name is Jeralis D. Stewart, and I am a special education teacher at Turning Point Academy. I come before you this evening beseeching the Board of Education to confirm the recommendation of an external consultant site review panel that Turning Point Academy should remain open and non-renew the contract with Turning Point Foundation LLC, with PGCPs managing the school for the 2019-2020 school year, with the intent of seeking another management organization with parent and teacher involvement as a part of this process. This request is being done for two primary reasons. One, during my six-year tenure at Turning Point Academy, there has been minimal visibility of the TPA governing board and the executive director unless it was a promotional activity or, as of late, the status as to the closing of the school 2017-2018 and the facility and governance of TPA 2018-2019. The site visit reaffirmed minimal visibility in the school, failure to secure a suitable building facility in over ten years, inability to garner substantial partnership relationships for the school in over a decade. However, despite these egregious governing concerns, TPA's performance data indicates steady increases in student performance in reading language arts, exceeding the district and state achievement outcomes. This growth is attributed to the fantastic administration and staff at Turning Point Academy, not the governing board or the executive director. Two, according to Allison Laurie, novelist and academic, a school building tells students who they are and how they should think about the world. It can help to manufacture rote obedience or independent inactivity. It can create high self-confidence or low self-esteem. School building facility limitations, as indicated by the site review, indicate but are not limited to the following: not large enough facility for the number of students, water fountains leaking in the hallway, peeling paint in the hallway, rubber floor coming up in multiple locations causing buckling, lack of appropriate playground equipment, and classrooms sizes being, excuse me, classrooms being less than sufficient. Finally, I am in total agreement with the recommendation of the site review panel to disband Turning Point Foundation LLC with this current board and executive director, and allow PGCPs management of TPA during the 2019-2020 school year. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vince Queen, from TPA also.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Turning Point Academy Public Charter Schools' mission is to establish educational structure and culture to inspire students, parents, and staff to give their very best to pursue the destiny and develop the unique potential. And we believe educational structure and culture has been captured through the Hyde Education Model and administered skillfully through the amazing teachers and staff at TPA. Some of those academic successes you've heard of, but I'll just mention a few. Four-star school in the latest Merlin School Report card, including ten-to-ten point for access to a well-rounded curriculum. Better county and state scores, 2018 Park in grades seven and eight. Fifty-five percent improvement in SPED raw scores by over ten points in both ELA and math. We would like to believe our partnering with the Hyde Partners, along with the amazing teachers, and they are amazing, and staff helped in achieving some of the success. We were tasked by the charter office in the following areas as it relates to leadership and governance, and we believe we completed it. We have new board composition with several board members with PhDs in education. All funding, all founding family members were removed from the board to prevent any conflict of interest. You know, the adoption and implementation of an eight-step strategic plan which covers board development and governance, Hyde culture and school climate, academic rigor, data-driven performance learning, financial management, facility planning, fundraising, and stakeholder communication. We continued to provide staff with any resources that were needed to close achievement gaps, and we provided financial presentations to both teachers, staff, and parents. We believe that we addressed many of the areas that were tasked to us through the one-year charter that we were given, and then some. The composition of the board, members with the various strengths, backgrounds, and accomplishments makes this board stronger than it's ever been, and I am proud to serve with them all. I would share with you, we made one additional move, and that was that we repositioned the executive director in another position, so we will be looking for a new executive director. Look, let us continue to push this mission of inspiring all stakeholders and pursuing their destiny, and the continuance to the development of everyone's unique potential, including ours. Let us continue to work, and let us do it over the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is Clara Alsop, regarding school construction. Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Clara Alsop, and I'm an English teacher at the International High School at Langley Park, located in Bladensburg, not Langley Park. I am speaking today in regards to the sudden delays to the construction plan for our building, and to reiterate why we need Cycle One Priority in the capital improvement program. Before I begin, I want to thank everyone who made it possible for our school to open in the first place. We are graduating our first class of students this month, and their achievements have been highlighted in multiple news outlets over the years. So thank you. As many of you are already aware, IHSLP is one of the smaller schools in PGCPs. We do not have a building of our own, and currently we share our building at Annapolis Road Academy with CBC. As a result, in our school, grades nine and ten are housed almost entirely in temporary trailers in the parking lot. Throughout the school day, most ninth and tenth graders will only ever set foot in the building to go to the bathroom, the cafeteria, or their one odd class of the day that's inside. I want to channel the quote that was mentioned earlier about how a school building informs students as to how they feel and see the world. As one can imagine, when two entire grade levels are pushed into the parking lot, it creates unnecessary barriers to student learning. For example, our temps are not equipped to be an appropriate space for any science labs requiring heat or running water. That eliminates a lot of powerful potential learning experiences for our student population, all English language learners, who already need as much hands-on learning as possible to access the curriculum. Our school also does not have a gymnasium or any athletic fields. On any given day, you'll find our students making use of the already smaller staff parking lot to practice sports like soccer and tennis right next to our cars. It's really a testament to how amazing our students are that they have not shattered my windshield so far. Because we don't have fields, many of our students will go to places like Forestville for their games. This means that a student athlete could spend hours in one day commuting all over PG County, from Langley Park to Bladensburg to Forestville, back to Langley Park, just to participate in athletics and academics. But perhaps one of the most serious implications of not having our own building in Langley Park is how it impacts the community. It impacts our ability to provide much-needed after-school supports for students and parents, despite their best efforts and intentions, regularly are not able to come into school in person for everything from teacher conferences, community events, informational nights, progress updates on their child, athletic events, and so on. Thanks to the board members' vote many years ago, our school was open to support English language learners. Building the International High School at Langley Park would not only benefit our students, it would revitalize the entire community of Langley Park and all its residents by being a community school. Please reconsider the construction timeline for our building and give IHSLP Cycle One Priority in the capital improvement plan. Thank you for your time and consideration to this urgent matter.
Thank you so much, Ms. Alsop. The next speaker is Phyllis Wright, regarding school maintenance. Ms. Wright, if you're here, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Wright. Dr. Goeson, I love you. You're doing a wonderful job, but I'm sad right now. I am very sad. I had a parent call me, North Forestville, that school is worse than District Heights. Please, please, I need you all to do a walkthrough. I don't understand why our schools are crumbling like they are, and we're spending so much money in getting them fixed up now. We have a maintenance personnel, they must not be working in the schools because I don't see anything being done. And if you all can go through these schools and see and get these people out of the parking lots, out of the trucks, stop letting teachers and other staff members transfer out of these schools and keeping these children in here, it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable. Stop doing this, please. Take care of our babies. As the Senator said, our children come first, and that's the most important thing. But we must have them in an environment where their health issue would not be concerned. You go over there to North Forestville, you know about this, sir? Belinda Quinn and I did a walkthrough. The building is filthy. From the time you walk in the door down to the shelter that they locked the door so we couldn't get in, which we know that is infested with mold down there. So I'm asking you all, you all that don't know me, I'm an advocate for the children of Prince George's County, please, help our babies. They need to have a strong education in a safe environment. Now, all this eighty-five million dollars for maintenance, where is it going? Because it's not going in these schools because they're crumbling. They're crumbling. Now, you have a foundation where we can get some construction workers in these buildings to fix them up? You can go in Washington, DC, in any street corner and look at their school buildings, they're very inviting. You look at our schools, they're not. I'm a parent, and it's sad to me when I'm sick that I have to get a phone call from a parent to tell me that their children are getting sick because of the building that we are housing them in, that our tax dollars is paying for these kids to be in. And it's unacceptable, it really is. You guys can do better. I know we have some new board members here, and you all are working good together. But Dr. Goeson, I don't understand why they're looking for somebody else when we got the best woman here for the job. Now, if it was a man, we wouldn't be looking for nobody. So don't look for nobody else when we have her right here. So let's pray. We're going to pray for you because you're doing a wonderful job with the message you was created with. We all know this, and we all backing you. So come on, come on, you all. You're a new board member, sir. Go to these schools, walk and see. Don't go up in Upper Marlboro with the schools. Come down there in District Heights and Sutland where these kids need some work done. Okay? I want you all to come down there. Dr. Thornton, you already know, because you've been there, but you need to see the maintenance of these buildings. You can't put two people in there and expect for these buildings to be maintained. No, no, go in there, go walk through. Thank you all so much for your time, and God knows, I love you, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your advocacy and service. Colleagues, we had two of our scheduled speakers who did not appear, so I'm going to recognize two additional speakers, and that will exhaust our speakers list. If Ms. Camilla McJohnson is here, you may come forward. I don't see Ms. Johnson. Alter Hayes, if you're here, please come forward. And Philip Van Wittenberg will be our final speaker. Ms. Hayes.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, School Board. I am Alter Hayes, and I represent the alumni of Central High School located in Capitol Heights, Maryland. I also am coming to you, in addition to being alumnus of the school, I come to you as a resident of the community that is surrounding the school of Wilburn, a part of the Central Civic Association of Wilburn. I am reaching out in a plea for assistance with a request to support a new Central High School. Central High School is located off of Central Avenue and Cabin Branch, and the demographics of the neighborhood are working-class families that are employed by the federal government, retired military, and minimum-wage workers. Central High School was opened in the late 50s, and the area has now been described as a socio-economic challenged area. In nineteen, I'm sorry, in 1982, Central High School received a much-needed facelift and was renovated. Since then, there have been minor updates to the school. Overall, the school needs to be replaced, new. In the 1990s, funds had been requested and granted to replace the school. Since then, there has been no discussion of a new school. The current proposal is to shut down the school and replace an HVAC system. The HVAC system is so old, there are no parts that are around to be able to remedy any of the issues with the system. The current student count at this school is 920 students. The proposal is for these students to go into, the students coming into this year to go to Forestville High School, basically as a surrogate school while they work on the HVAC system. My concern, as a citizen and alumnus of the school, that since this school is located in central Prince George's County, we may not get the school, the kids that walk to school to actually make it to Forestville High School and matriculate further. I'm asking, as we have watched other schools around us in close proximity get rebuilt since 1982, I'm asking for a new Central High School. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The final speaker is Mr. Philip Van Wittenberg. Please come forward, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Philip Van Wittenberg. I'm the board member on the Greater Ecchique Civic Association. I actually have no kids in school, but like the Senator said, everybody who lives here in Prince George's County should be caring about what's happening to our kids. And I'm representing a community, a lot of people don't have kids in the school, but there's a lot here. We've got our PTA president here. We've got our PTA president here as well. So, as a member of the board, we've been watching what's been going on with Ecchick Academy. And it's been overcrowded for a couple of years, and it's only gotten worse. I was on the task force that Ms. Williams set up. And one of the things we have is we had a presentation of options that are for that, and that's on your first reader tonight. One of the things I want to express just a little bit of concern that we're looking at, and that is, the first option that's listed is not what we had in the school because it's saying that the first option has additional middle school seats for surrounding middle schools. What we had recommended was additional seats at Potomac Landing. The second option is also not what was presented, and while it will lessen overcrowding at Ecchick Academy, it will, by taking about 100 students, 75 going to Potomac Landing by making Potomac Landing a K through six, and 25 to Forest Elementary, making it a K through six. You'll still be overcrowded at Ecchick Academy, about 108% of the state-rated capacity. And Potomac Landing will also be overcrowded. You have further options down there that are going to be considered in the future, and that's why I wanted to come tonight to speak. And that is because what we need to do is not wait on making a decision on how we're going to finish that project. Otherwise, we're going to have multiple schools overcrowded. And one other thing that I would like to point out is we also have a large student population that are there because of shared housing. And one thing that I would ask the board to look at is we need to make sure that the shared housing policies are strictly enforced. And one thing that really needs to be emphasized is not having shared housing situations causing schools to be overcrowded to where you have to have kids that also live there go to some other school because of boundary changes and have increased busing. That's all I have for you. I really thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. That exhausts our speakers list for this evening, and I will now yield the floor to Dr. Goldson for an introduction of our first discussion item for the evening. Dr. Goldson.
Thank you. Item 4.01, FY '20 amendments to the FY '17 approved Educational Facilities Master Plan is up for discussion. Mr. Stanton and his team will provide an overview of this discussion item.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson. Mr. Stanton, please.
Hey, Sean, will you and Elizabeth come up forward, please?
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Thornton, Dr. Goldson, and staff. My name is Elizabeth Chason. I'm the CIP officer with the Department of Capital Programs. And with me this evening is Joseph Wolfe, a planner with the same department. And we're going to present the amendments for tonight. Joseph is going to start.
Evening, board members and Dr. Goldson. Thank you. This is my first time here, so bear with me. I'm sweating the gadgets and the protocol. Thank you very much. As most of you know, every year the EFMP, the Educational Facilities Master Plan, is either completely rewritten and adopted, or an amendment is created, and we're doing an amendment this year. There we go. The FY '20 amendments to the EFMP include an amended Appendix C, which talks about school-by-school enrollment, current and future projections, an amended Appendix W, which discusses school-by-school, the current utilization and the condition of the inventory. We've developed an amended Section 4, which talks about a plenary overview and the strategic spending plan for FY '19. And that also supersedes Section 6 and Section 7, FY capital needs, and the strategic spending plan. As you know, the EFMP is the basis for the annual capital improvement plan. The EFMP comes to the board in May and June for reading and for approval. And that kicks off the development of the CIP, which we start this summer. It will go to the state in the fall, and then becomes approved, and the cycle continues. Continuing is how this is having this quicker work. The goals and the policies in the FMP justify the needs of the district. All of these feed into the development of the EFMP, the community analysis, the district's goals, policies, and guidelines, the facility inventory evaluation, facility needs, and the CIP summary and spending plan. Elizabeth will take it from here for the next few slides.
Thanks, Joe. So, in the FY '17 Educational Facilities Master Plan, it marked a new beginning of how we were going to plan for the future of modernizing schools. We had vetted in 2016 the findings and recommendations from the 2015 Master Plan Support Project, or MPSP. And with PGCPS staff and the community, the result was this master plan. It had a school-by-school schedule to include modernizing schools, constructing new schools, and grade reorganizations. So, Section 4 of the plan included the prioritization of schools by cycles. Each of these cycles is about six years to represent a six-year period of the CIP or a capital improvement program going forward. So, Cycles 1 through 3 were approximately 133 schools costing $8.5 billion over 20 years. And for the first time, the prioritization was based on utilization, condition, and educational adequacy, not just condition, which is what we had looked at in the past. So, Cycle 1 focused mainly on overutilization of schools and their conditions, and there are 32 projects approximately for a cost of $3 billion. Cycle 2, there are 58 projects, and it focused more on condition across the county. And Cycle 3 was $2.5 billion to complete all of the other projects in the planning in this county. So, why amend the plan? What we found is that funding did not keep pace with the plan. The plan basically was for $425 million per year, and we received an average of about $140 million per year. And at that rate, it would take about 60 years to implement this plan. So, it wasn't up to par. So, in FY '19, we amended the plan by adding Section 7, a new strategic spending plan. And it had four parts, and we'll go over each of those parts. In general, it took the list of Cycle 1 schools and sorted them into schools that could be modernized using traditional state and county funding, receive stage renovations using county funding, be replaced or modernized using P3 or alternative construction financing methods, or be renovated, replaced using new construction methods. So, the first part was to shift the systemic maintenance projects to county-only funding, and that's represented in this bar graph in the green. And you can see that the state, we would basically, in the blue, is where we would use the county funding for systemic projects, and the green would be for modernizations. And we would use the majority of the state funding, projected to be about $50 million, with our share of $21 million to complete these projects. And as a result, there are only two systemic projects in the FY '20 CIP. So, we're making progress on that front. And instead, we have a lot of modernizations in the FY '20 Capital Improvement Program. The second part was to use local funding for stage renovations, and that represents the $50 million in this bar graph. This would address the most critical needs at more schools sooner with less disruption. The stage renovations were sorted into about five different categories: healthy buildings, core enhancements, future-ready schools, safe passages to schools, and secure accessible facility entrances. These would move faster than they had in the past with using state funding. So, stage renovation, what is it? The healthy building stage is the most expensive, projected to be, and it would address heating and cooling upgrades in schools along with windows, exterior doors, water quality. It's one of the five types that would be implemented over approximately a five-to-seven period. The second is core enhancement stage, and these are renovations of the kitchen and cafeteria, gymnasium, lab renovations such as science labs, et cetera, and bathroom renovations. Next would be future-ready teaching and learning spaces, which would focus on classrooms, adding wireless access throughout the building, teaching technology in every classroom, lighting replacements, ceiling replacements, and replacing classroom furniture. And the last two are safe passages to schools, or SPS. We noted that many of our schools are built in the 1960s, and we really don't have a separation between bus and vehicular drop-off now that parents drop off a lot of their students. And so, that presented an issue, along with accessible sidewalks to get to school. And we expanded that to include the playgrounds and playing fields for improvement. And then the last, and very important, is secure accessible facilities entrances. And this is where we would focus on not just cameras for schools for security reasons, but retrofitting the storefronts or the entries, the lobbies to each school. Right now, you can really walk in the door after you hit the buzzer straight into the hall. And these new secure entrances would be kind of a cross lobby, which would channel the visitor into the reception area before going into the school. So, it would be a major kind of change to most of our schools. So, the third part was to utilize alternative construction financing for schools. And you've probably heard a bunch about this at this point. We sometimes refer to this as public-private partnerships, or P3, otherwise ACF. The goal is to build, you know, anywhere from five to seven schools using a private development team to build these schools over a period of time. And we would use about $30 million in, between operating and capital money, to do this. This is on top of the $160 million that we've been using each year. And there are examples of public-private partnerships across the county. One of them would be the Clean Water Partnership. You may have noticed in the county that there are a lot of stormwater retrofits happening throughout the county. And that's through this Clean Water Partnership. University of Maryland has used public-private partnerships in their South Campus Commons to build dormitories for students. Howard County is currently looking to build a courthouse. And we're, of course, looking at public-private partnerships for many of our road improvements across the country as well as in this metropolitan area. So, the DBFM model really stands for Design, Build, Finance, Maintain. And the key to this really is maintenance. There are public-private partnerships that just design, build, and finance, and then turn over the keys to the school system. But we're looking for a partner that will maintain it. That way, we know that it was built well and will be maintained over the long term. And this doesn't mean custodial maintenance. This means things like the heating and cooling system, and replacing doors, and major replacements, capital improvements. I'm going to turn it over to Joe for the next few slides. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. Tagging on to Elizabeth's narrative. What the Capital Programs is proposing that we do to move forward is to, as Elizabeth stated, shifts systemic maintenance and stage renovations to county funding so that we can focus the state funding on comprehensive modernizations or school replacements and use the ACF for the construction of multiple school projects in a condensed period of time. One of the ways we're proposing to model our new construction is through the pilot program at Cherokee Lane Elementary, which was granted dispensation for a special program by the state of Maryland. We have been given an allotment of a little over $30,000 per student or per seat to construct the new Cherokee Lane campus. And what that means is that we are going to propose to build the majority of the school, the classroom component and some of the core facilities, off-site and have the facility delivered to the campus and assembled there. The school you see in the bottom photo is Millbrook Elementary in Reading, Pennsylvania. A cohort of us traveled to Reading last fall to visit the construction facility and this school and the school in West Reading that was also rebuilt in the same fashion. The original school was built in the '20s. This school was built about eight years ago. I have to tell you, it still looks brand-new, and when you're inside, you can't tell that it wasn't stick-built. We were very impressed. And what we're also doing in terms of the educational spec or the design guidelines, my colleagues and I are working on those with the educational program specialists to make sure that the school is designed as efficiently as possible as well. What you see on the screen now is the previous Cycle 1 set of projects. And I'm going to, Elizabeth, do you want me to go through these, or should I just skip to the next one and go through those in detail?
This is really just to show you what the old format was for looking at Cycle 1 schools and how we've updated it.
Yep. So, the next page shows the projects that are now in Cycle 1 through 2017 through 2025. And again, show it. I'm just protocol.
Yeah. And these are just an amended table, and you can see that in blue, we're showing the various stages that each of these schools are in, such as completed or in planning, design. Some of them are having current feasibility studies performed on them. So, it's a different way of arranging them because we realized that we weren't really meeting the timeline that we had before, that it was becoming increasingly outdated. So, all of the schools that were in Cycle 1 are still in Cycle 1, but they're arranged differently.
And as Elizabeth said, you can see in the blue type what the status of each campus is at this point. And some of them have been completed. One of the new things in the EFMP is a specific swing space plan that we're proposing to have a conscious way to swing schools to a new site so that when they have a large stage renovation or when they need to be completely modernized, we have a plan for giving them a temporary home. We are proposing two secondary sites, one in the north part of the county and one in the south. The south site, we are proposing be the former Forestville High School campus, which the young lady mentioned earlier this evening. In the north, as you know, we don't have any excess high school space. All of our high schools are full, and some of them are way over capacity. So, we don't have an extra site to use. What we're proposing is investigating building a modular campus with off-site construction to build a swing secondary site on the parcel at 51st and Huron Street in the Daniels Park neighborhood. Now, this would not be for a permanent secondary school. This is a school that would be actively used year over year, depending on which secondary school needed to be moved there for its replacement or modernization. We're also looking at elementary sites, two or more each in the north, central, and south part of the district. In the north, once the current Cherokee Lane site is vacated, we would propose using that as a swing site for Adelphi. using that as a swing site for Adelphi Elementary as it's, as it leaves its site so the new middle school can be built and before its new campus is finished. In the, in the central part of the district, we're looking at Meadowbrook Elementary. If other schools are consolidated, we might look at using those as well. In the south part of the district, again, if we consolidate schools, we would look at which ones would most be appropriate to use as long-term as swing space. As you know, in the northern and northwest part of the district, we are, we don't have enough seats at, at any school level. So this is our proposed list of projects.
The old numbers, yeah. The next slide is the new numbers.
Yep, okay. Again, we have a former, former table, and then we have a updated table. So for the high school, high school component, there's the new International High School at Langley Park. It would be a permanent home for students that are currently be housed in a, in a interim space at Annapolis Road. We're proposing a new high school in the Adelphi area. That would be on the site that's currently occupied by Cherokee Lane Elementary, and it would relieve High Point Northwestern and Parkdale High Schools. And the modernization, replacement of High Point High School with a net gain of 400 seats. So for a total of 2,400 net new high school seats. The middle school level, we are, we are in the process of designing two, two brand-new middle schools. One at Glen Ridge Park, one in the Adelphi area on the side of the, proposed on the current side of Adelphi Elementary. A replacement for William Worth is also in design. We're proposing a modernization replacement of Charles Carroll and the modernization and replacement of Heightsville Middle School. All of the existing schools that would be replaced would be built to 1,200 seats, which is our, our new design ed spec for middle school campuses. In the central region, we're, let's see. Kenmore Middle School, we're proposing a modernization and expansion to 1,200 seats. It would relieve Kenmore adjacent middle schools and the, and the current K-6 feeder schools. As with Walker Mill Middle School, it would allow the feeder schools to become K-5 campuses. And again, with Thomas Johnson. Next slide is the new updated tenure enrollment forecast for the district. As you can see, at the K-5 level or the next 10 years, we're, we're projecting a growth of about 900 students. The middle school population is projected to remain relatively stable, but the high school population is forecasted to grow by almost 4,000 students, so the equivalent of two high schools. And we're expecting most of that in the central and northern part of the district.
And so in conclusion, the board action would be to look at the amendments and to vote on them. The amended Appendix C, which is actually required by the state as an, to be amended every year. Amended Appendix W, it's also required by the state. There are current utilization of facility inventory data. And then amended Section Four, which we're updating because the overview of Section Five was becoming increasingly outdated regarding under and over enrollment numbers for the county, and that's why we just shared some of them with you. In addition, the Cycle One Project Table that we showed you, the swing site space plan, updated state-rated capacities for schools that we update each year along with the 10-year enrollment projections. And that concludes our presentation.
To go some please proceed. Anything else you want to say? Okay. Colleagues, I'll now recognize Ms. Queen for a point of personal privilege, and then Mr. Wallace for comments. Ms. Queen.
Hi. Yes, I just wanted to recognize our delegate, Jas Lewis, as a point of personal privilege. Recognize the delegate for being here. Thank you for coming out.
Thank you, delegate Lewis, for your presence and your service on behalf of our school system, sir. Thank you. Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And colleagues, I do apologize for being late. To the administration, I thank you so much. I know we recently had a brief conversation at our, what's the new name, Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee about the capital improvement, the CIP budget. But for those who could not attend, board members and the community, my question to the administration, on the ACF listed list, I know this is not the finalized list, but could you just go over how we got here, who was on that committee? Is this a, this, the proposed list, is that something that is likely to be the final list? And if so, when we do receive, hopefully we receive more money from the county and the state to increase ACF funding, will there be a similar elongated process to increase the schools that are on the ACF list?
Mr. Wallace, the board or the work group that was created by the county council consisted of Councilwoman Galeras, Councilwoman Todd Turner, myself, Ms. Chason, the current COO and the former COO, who's no longer on the committee, Ms. Williams, Board Member Williams. It also consisted of Aines Claggett, who was on, he was administrator, member of the council councils team, county councils team, Leroy Maddox, who's their legislative person, who's on the county councils team. Also, OMB Director Stanley Early was on the team, and there have been various other members who, of, of the county executives team who have come on and off at various phases. Currently, they're, the county council's attorney, I mean, the county's attorney is on there, one of the county's attorneys is on there. So it's, it varies based upon need. The list that was, the original list that was developed was much larger. It was selected from a group of 15 potential schools throughout the entire county, and it was based upon three criteria. One, they had to be Cycle One. Two, they couldn't be available for stage renovations because of their condition. And then the question of overcrowding was the other issue, how, if they were, they had to reduce overcrowding by being included on the list. And later on, there was another criteria that was added to it after we got a little deeper into it, after we retained Jones Lang LaSalle, which is the, the affordability question. And we started getting into that, and so that started to shake up the different types of schools that might be included. And then we made some decisions based on those things. Upmost in those things, much like the way we did the, the Cycle One, as you know, there were, there were several studies that were done in the past back in, and the first study that was done was just on physical condition of buildings. And when you do that, you get a, a certain ranking of schools. And then with the later facility assessment, you, we used educational efficacy, it used condition, and it also used enrollment issues as another criteria. And so that often changes where a school will fall in a ranking. So to give you an example, High Point High School, when you just based on facilities, was 144 in the original one, but when you add all those other criteria, it moves up to 14 in, in the criteria of where it should be dealt with. And so very much like that, we use that similar analysis in order to determine which of the schools we thought might need, might be originally in that. And that's how we got to the list of the schools that were originally there, but it is not a final list.
So with the ACF, the goal is to, is not so much the, the condition or the, how recently the school was renovated, but if it's overcrowded, is that the major weight? So if I have a school that was recently renovated in 2008, but it's still at 120% capacity, that outranks a school that hasn't been touched in 30, 40 years?
No.
Even though it's not overcapacity?
No. So Cycle One is the primary condition. You have to be in Cycle One. If you're not in Cycle One, you aren't considered. So if a school, Cycle One schools are all based on basically facility condition, enrollment, and educational efficacy. So right then, you start to have schools that are already concentrated with those issues. And so the ones that would have the biggest impact on that were the ones that were selected on, on reducing over enrollment.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Wallace, if I can try to get directly to the question, I think you were trying to push through was, so the board, the Board of Education, I think originally proposed, was submitted a EFMP last year that included a kind of a, a group of schools that would be considered for ACF. Then at the board retreat, the consultant actually went through and talked through, here's different packages, and they had to do that in order to kind of do, I think, a proposition for whether or not we could do P3 in our county. The, the short answer is there's no final list until there's an RFQ and an RFP. The RFQ actually just acts for qualifications, a high school, a middle school, and elementary school between this number of students and this number of students. Land acquisition, whether we own the land or not. Does, the actual list doesn't come out really until the fall when we know the three qualifying groups, and then they have to present to us an actual presentation on how much it's going to cost us to actually build X number of schools over three years. So what you see is the same thing you saw last year and the same thing you saw at the board retreat. But I, I think Mr. Matlock will tell you, almost every day, there's different considerations based off of cost, based off of the price of, I think Mr. Matlock told me, the price of steel and concrete and tariffs and everything else. So there's about six more months' worth of conversation before a final list is even presented for approval.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Mr. Wallace, I'll come back to you in the second round.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Williams, please, if you want to.
You can sign, sign me up for round two, too. So I just want to just talk about, from my understanding and my experience, how we got to where we are today. And we heard in our, in our public speaking about, speakers about the conditions of our school building. Unfortunately, for many years, there have been neglect in our schools, and for them to be, the average to be 50 years old, we are where we are today. And I think it's, I commend our CIP office to come, to walk through that Parsons report that talked about the, just the facilities and the conditions, and moved us to the Master Plan Support Services, and now gets us to this annual Educational Facilities Master Plan that we look at every year to make modifications. So there is a process to get us from the conditions that we're under today to improving all of our schools. It's not until we step through this process will we stop having these conditions like Central High School, like District Heights Elementary. Because if we do nothing, this is what we get: mold, water fountain issues, entry issues, all of those things. So I commend you all on the work, and it's a process. But I do have some questions about, in the EFMP in particular, when we're talking about consolidating schools. When I first got on the board, we, I sat in one of our meetings where we had 29 schools to close, and we were going to open seven. That didn't make sense to me. I'm glad to see that we're now down to considering 24 schools. We've removed five from the list, it appears, and, and I think we're moving in the right direction because now I think we're really looking at the, the other schools and transportation and all those other things when we're talking about consolidating schools. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that when I'm looking at this report, when we're looking at consolidating schools, and I understand what that means, there is a potential, but I would just want to make sure that we take in consideration all the factors: the location, the adjacent schools, meaning how close are they? Because if we have to put our kids on a bus to go to another school, then we fall into transportation issues, the neighborhood that it sits in. You know, a lot of the schools in my district, we have single-family homes versus, you know, multifamily homes. So it's a different conversation when you're in the middle of 45 multifamily houses. So we have to take that into consideration. We also have to take into consideration the history of that school. If it is a historical school, meaning the first African-American school for, high school for, for African-American students, we have to think about that. So I want to make sure that, that we are clear on that. The other part of the, the consolidation or, one, one of the, the things that we look at when we look at consolidating schools, we talk about the, the number of, of seats that are left unfilled, the state-rated capacity. So I like the chart that we have here, and we looked at the actual students that are in the seats over the past 10 years. I was just wondering if we looked at how we compare to our projections. You know, when we projected during those years, what did they look like? Were we on target? Are we off by a regular, you know, 10%, 20%? I just want to make sure that if we have to modify how we look at our projections, not really because of the EFMP, but more because of this, the SBB, which is my next favorite subject, because that impacts schools when we get that wrong and we have 100 more students coming into the school that year. And I know that the projections cannot predict, you know, economics. It can't predict the climate of the area, if it's a good or bad area, if they're building houses. We could take that into account, but we know that that doesn't directly affect the number of students that are in the school. So I would like for us, as we go through the EFMP for next year, to take a look at how we're doing on projections versus the actuals, just so we can take, take a look to see if we, you know, need to change how we do that slightly. One thing that I did see that specifically for my school, one of the schools that are in my district, is Akakik Academy. We know that's a consolidation of several schools. Unfortunately, in the, in the report, it does not show the combined number. And I'm hoping that one day we can get to that because now it is one school, K through eight. It's, we still sort of think of it as a high school and, I mean, a middle school and an elementary. So I want us to see if we can combine that, and so I will put myself in for round two.
Thank you, Ms. Queen, Ms. Queen, Ms. Williams, I'm sorry. Ms. Ahmed, I will come back to you with the second round. Ms. Ahmed.
Good evening, Ms. Chason, Mr. Matlock. I was looking through some of the supplemental materials that were on board docs, and I saw under the high school section that we are building for a proposed additional capacity of 2,400, which was what you showed on one of your screens. But the projected deficit in 2026 is 3,300. That's a difference of 900 students. And so my question is, why are we building schools that we know will already be overcapacity once they're built?
Well, we, we have a board policy that we only build to 2,500 students. So the new Adelphi area, northern area school would build, be built to the maximum, and still it wouldn't be large enough, along with increasing the size of High Point. At that point, there have been several suggestions by Senator Rosa Pepp and others to increase some of the enrollment and other, other programs that are being piloted throughout the county as a way to decrease some of the high school enrollment. And we're also looking at future projections and how accurate they are.
So is board policy the only thing that's guiding those capacity numbers? Is it, it, nothing at the state level?
If, if we had more land, we would build more schools, but we're having trouble finding just the one property.
Yeah. I'm guessing in my head, I'm thinking for the existing schools, if, if, like, I think you all mentioned, the capacity level for middle schools is 1,200. What if it was 1,500 instead of 1,200? And I'm, I'm not, that's, I don't know that that's a question that you can answer right now, but what I'm thinking about and what I would like to see as follow-up from this conversation is maybe just capacity numbers for these buildings that actually reflect expected enrollment. Can you all show us what it would look like if we built schools based upon our expected enrollment as opposed to specifically what the ed specs are showing or require?
Yes, and I, I think one of the things is that if you look deeply into Facility, FY17 Educational Facility Master Plan, and that's Section Five, there are actually details on enlarging Parkdale and some of the other high schools in the northern area to make up the deficit as well. And that's not being reflected in these six-year numbers.
Can, so as a follow-up, can, can we be shown some options of what can be done to make sure that we are building or that our plan reflects the expected enrollment? I think that would be really helpful, I think, for this board to consider.
Okay.
Just in approving, not only approving the, the changes, but also making sure that we're doing our due diligence not to be building buildings that we know are going to be overcapacity. And if it's board policy, I- And if it's board policy, I think that's something that we can look at. I think if that's, if that's the only regulation guideline, I would kneel to the policy committee and the rest of my teammates on the policy committee to look at that.
Thank you, colleague, and our committee structure is beginning to work. So, thank you. Ms. Queen.
Thank you. First, I just wanted to say some points before I ask you some questions. On a personal note, you guys, I'm mad, I'm gonna be honest, I am truly mad that we are where we are today, that our schools are looking like they didn't for years, over 30 years, 30 to 50 years, that our past elected leaders have gotten it and overlooked our babies and let our kids get here. So I'm truly mad, where our students, our staff, our underpaid teachers, and our buildings are falling apart. Now, not all of our buildings are falling apart, but the ones that are falling apart are not fit for our children to be in, honestly. And I'm mad that this has happened under the watch of a lot of our past leaders and some still in office. Now, I realize that we do have a good percent of fairly good schools, because I've been visiting some of the schools, and some of them in pretty good condition, but the inequality and inequity of the school, of knowing the schools that I visit that are not good compared to the ones that I've had visited, it is not fair, it is not socially fair to our children, and we must make a change. I am proud to say that I believe that this board will make a difference, and I believe that they will make a difference for the future of our kids. But we have to get all of our schools up to par, and we need to make sure that we are doing it and we are working hard. And with the tax dollars, as our senator said, we need to make sure that everybody, every penny is spent inside our schools. We have to cut the fat. And that goes not just from the Board of Education to do what we need to do, but our elected leaders, from our council members to our senators, and we've got to start investing more into our schools. Stop building new buildings that you're living in and you're housing your job in every day, but our kids are in raggedly schooled. Stop it. We have to stop doing it. None of us would buy a new house and have our kids in an old house. And that's what we're doing when we build new county buildings. We're building new buildings and have our kids in raggedly buildings. So I just want to address that. But I have a couple of questions for you. The first question is on page 17. If we're having a private partnership, why are we spending 30 more dollars? One of the things that stuck me, you said we need 30 million more that we'll be spending, but if we're going to PP3, why do we have to spend 30 million more? So tell me where that extra millions of dollars is going.
So, Ms. Queen, how this works is, the department, our department, would take a portion of our earnings, so it's not a total of 30 million dollars on top of what we're getting. My department would be giving up roughly, as according to the last EFMP, which was the 2000, the last update amendment, rather, we would give up 10 million dollars from our budget to go to that project. The county would then invest another 20 specifically for this, and hopefully, if we're lucky, which we may be, then the state may match that fund in order to give us more money for these schools.
Okay, and then another question I have, which is concerned, that I noticed you did the cycle 1, 2, 3, and adding up 20 years, it's going to be 18 or 20 years. So about time we get finished cycle 1 and go to cycle 2, and then at the end of cycle 2, about time we go to cycle 3, it'd be over 20 years. So a lot of schools in cycle 1 are going to start having issues. In reality, in my household, after five to 10 years, the carpet is going bad, the furniture is going bad, I've got to start replacing things after 10 years. So I'm looking at, come on now, when you're talking about three cycles and you're talking about 20 years, so we're going to be back where we're at, because a lot of these things are going to have to be replaced.
Well, these buildings are being built for a 40-year minimum lifecycle, that's a minimum lifecycle. Most of our buildings, as you know, have been in work and in process for a lot of them, for more than 50 years, some 60 and older. And we do have another 70-some buildings in cycle 4 that we still have to get to as well. So the idea is that we're going to build schools that will last, and so that we can get through the next cycle. So the goal is that they would last at least 40 years, so that we can get from these next, these cycles into cycle 4, out of cycle 4, then we can start back on the cycle 1 schools.
I appreciate that it is the idea, but you guys, I want us to be realistic. I'm looking at some of the new houses that have been built, they're falling apart, they have so many issues, and we have to be realistic in looking at, we have brand-new houses, siding is falling off, the issue, the construction of these materials is not as sturdy, our new cars are not as sturdy as they used to be. So we need to really be realistic with that. It may say 40 years, but they're not lasting 40 years, and I don't even expect you to answer that, because, so let me go on with my next time. So my next question is, with these cycles, who decided what went in cycle 1? I know a lot of it was before my time, because I'm trying to figure out how some of these schools got in cycle 1, I just want to understand, who decided this?
So the way that this was done was, there was an original study, it was, that was done in, I think, 2013.
Excuse me, sir, would you hold that for Ms. Queen's next comment? Hold your thought, and I'll call on her. Ms. Bulster Struthers, please.
Thank you so much. Just want to start out by commending this work, the transparent process that's led to this new document, that I see everything in here that I've seen along the way, and the clarity of the organization of it to help us tell the story of where we're headed. Just want to say how much I appreciate that. The question of building utilization in the north and how we deal with the capacity that my colleague Ms. Ahmed raised, I'm glad it came up. I know it's a programmatic issue and not as much about CIP, but I don't, I also don't want that to get lost in this conversation about the possibility of these buildings being suitable for evening high school, or, you know, shifts in schedules, or RCT expansions that our students can go to multiple campuses. So specifically, I was looking at the, that swing space, that you now have a much more detailed plan, really appreciate that. And just looking at Hyattsville Middle as a performing arts school, that it has unique needs and will be difficult to swing, and the city of Hyattsville just voted on Monday to, say to PGCPS, to look at the one available MNC PPC parcel of land in the town to consider for the new middle school. And I just want to say, I hope that that can still be part of this conversation as we look at Hyattsville Middle, to avoid swinging the students in this school, and of course, that this school stays a priority, is one of the oldest, 81-years-old continuous use schools, and overcrowded as well. And then I, you know, I, you know, in joining Ms. Queen and the political end of this and where we are today, looking to the future, asking everyone that we do have to join together around the Build to Learn Act in Annapolis next year for these additional funds that anyone who's looking at a school that's not in cycle 1, and I think all of us have great examples of schools that we cannot believe are not in cycle 1, that deserve to be in cycle 1, this will get to those schools quicker. And so if everyone joins in and fighting to get these schools moving, and then we get more money through Build to Learn Act, we will get to those schools sooner. So I, again, I thank you for this detailed proposal.
Thank you, colleague. Ms. Williams, for a second round for three minutes, please. Ms. Williams.
So I have a question on slide 23 of the presentation. So this slide here is one of, actually, one of the slides that is very informative. When we look at the, when we talk about the cycle 1 schools, previously, we just show what schools we had listed and the FY, the fiscal year that we planned to do work. This allows us to show that we are making progress. And so you'll see a number of those schools on there, Tulip Grove, Fairmont Heights, they're actually completed. And so I don't know if, when we, when we show this with, to the public, I think it's important because it gets, it says that we're no longer on, on first base, we're no longer on the problem, we're moving this process forward. So when we talk about the number of schools that are in cycle 1, it's no longer the 30-some-odd schools, we're down to about 25 schools. So it shows the progress that we're, that we're making in this plan that we're moving forward. The next comment that I want to make is about the ACF and the public-private partnership. The slide that has the chart that shows the different funding sources with the 30 million at the top, I don't have that number of that slide.
You're probably looking at slide 17.
Slide 17, can we put that one up? So on the public-private partnership, I think it's, we have to be clear on what we're doing with this 30 million dollars. Typically, when we, when we invest in a school, especially if we're building a new school, we pay that whole, if it's a high school, 125 million before we open the doors in the school. So we've paid for the entire school, it's sort of called, they call it PEGO. Basically, you're paying as you're building, and at the end of the day, when the students walk in the school, we pay for all of the construction. This 30 million doesn't start until the first day a student walks in our school. And so the advantage of this is that those five to seven schools that we initially had listed to receive state funding will no longer need state funding, so it will, we can, that's how we can shift this money to other schools that are on the cycle 1. So it's important to understand that what this 30 million will pay for, not only the mortgage that we now have on the school, but also the maintenance. So when the school is open for those 30 years, they're also maintaining it, changing the carpet, changing the filters and things like that.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Valentine, for five minutes, then I'll return to the three-minute cycle. Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, and I appreciate the presentation. First question, so slide nine just talks about how, how underfunded we've been from the state level, I think required amount being forged in 25 million a year, but our annual funding is around 140 million. I guess my question is, you are to the administration, is there any plan, or can we, can we assume that that's what we're going to get moving forward? And if so, why? And if, any way that we can, as a county, as an institution, try to increase that number over time? Because it seems as if the impetus for this change is based on the reality and on history, and it's sort of extrapolating that forward, that this is going to be the new normal.
So the county exec and I spent a lot of time in Annapolis, this legislative session, looking at public-private partnership legislation, where the state will be able to allow additional funding to come in and do just what Ms. Chason spoke about, and accelerated implementation of school construction. We're grateful that at the conclusion of that legislative session, the language is, was passed through the House and the Senate for a public-private partnership, hoping that that will prime us up to return next winter, in January, from January to April, to once again, press to our elected officials to now put money in that public-private partnership language that was passed this session. I'm believing that that will happen. I think it was partly wanting to make sure that they move forward in terms of the current funding, and they, many of our elected officials encouraged us to come back next year to the legislative session. So I'm hopeful that what you see as the norm here will potentially continue on the inter-agency for school construction side, but we will also have another parallel track where the public-private partnership state funding can also come into play. So literally, we'll be using multiple ways to kind of get off of cycle 1 by utilizing a variety of strategies.
Thank you. The second question is around our county funding and what we expect to get from them moving forward, and what we've gotten in the past. I don't, when I see in this chart on, I think it's slide 11, it's also come up with slides, do we have a dollar figure of how much we have initially got from the county, particularly in what we expect to get? Seems as if we're going to, we plan to use that for a lot of the stage renovation, but I didn't see a dollar figure, it's our percentage.
So we can provide you the letter that was presented to our county council members on this Wednesday, that outlined the projects that we requested and what the state request was for funding and what the county request for funding was. We just presented it to our county council on Wednesday. We are hopeful that much of the requests of what we asked for, typically, our county council members do tend to try to meet as much of that as possible. So we can provide that to all board members that was shared from the county council OMB side to their members.
And I appreciate, I joined you there, and so I definitely would appreciate having, having our colleagues also see that number. This is sort of the one area where the county council, who hear from their constituents about the state of the school, the school buildings, and the school board are aligned, and their passion for this work was clear on yesterday. I would just say to my colleague, Ms. Ahmed's point, and I think also Ms. Queen's point, when we're building new schools, and I will use the example that Council McGlaro's mentioned, and that's Green Belt Middle School, a brand-new school, but has a number of temporaries out back, it's because of overcrowding. And the idea that we're going to be able to maintain the schools to last a 40 years that you mentioned, sir, is that we make sure that they're not overused. And so, sure, I expect the schools to be built with better quality than a lot of the homes that you're mentioning, Ms. Queen. At the same time, we have to ensure that those schools, once they're open, they're not overcrowded. Similarly, where I live, closer to, and Mr. Burrows lives, closer to Oxon Hill, it was built smaller than the previous Oxon Hill, and a lot of those students were moved to Friendly, Crossland, and Potomac. But the question is, you know, is the condition of that school going to maintain itself as long as we don't put too many students in that building as well? I guess my last question would be around, and this is brought up by the council as well, the state of our temporaries. Is there a better mechanism to potentially rent them as opposed to purchase them, to ensure that they're also maintained, similar to our P3? Because it's clear that the maintenance of those temporaries is struggling as well, which was mentioned by one of our speakers.
Would you hold your response until the second round for Mr. Valentine? Ms. Queen. Ms. Queen.
I'm coming. You speed racer. Again, I want to thank my colleagues, because I have Visiter Ernie Just Middle School, which is not even 15 years old, and they're falling apart. And I can tell you that. The schools, I mean siding is coming off, so I'm going to rub on the side of the road, the school is falling apart. So I just want to add that. So my next round, if you can answer my question, I'm going to tell you why my question is important, because I had Ms. Daisy here, she just got up and left, but she is the Civic Association President of Wilburn, and Ms. Alter Hayes, she spoke, she is the vice president, and which I was the vice president. I live three houses from Walker Mill Middle School. You're talking about this being in phase one, never did anyone from the school system come out and say, hey, to the community, we have a civic association meeting that meets there, we're going to do something in this school, we want you guys to have an input. I have a problem with us putting a school and redoing a school in a community that our civic association leaders have not had an input in, or, at all. And I know for a fact, because I was the vice president last year, and I live three houses over. So I think when we are doing things like this with schools, period, we need to make sure that the community is involved. These are schools that the community members paid tax dollars for, these are schools that, I live three houses, I'm going to have to look at Walker Mill Middle School like I look at it now. So we need to make sure that our community leaders and our community members are involved. So that's why I asked that question, because I knew nothing about it. Thank you.
I just want to add, because I know you have one minute and 38 seconds, that we actually did four years ago have community meetings around the master plan support project, that's what it was called at that time. And so people did come out, but they probably didn't realize what that would, what that would mean for the state of our buildings on that, from now, from henceforth.
Right, but what I'm saying, Dr. Gosden, is a little different from that. It's the same way, like, when I held the meeting about Central and what was going to be happening at Central, people knew it was about Central. If something is going to be going on with Walker Mill, we need a meeting about Walker Mill. Just like Ms. Stone, you heard that board members, William, have been meeting with Akakik, and they've been talking about it. We need to personalize it. Our county council, when they hold here, when things are going on in the community, they make sure businesses come out to us and let us know before they even want to bring a business in our district. Go out there and talk to the HOA Civic Association leaders, get their opinion, what type, what they want, to make sure it's going to be approval, it's going to be in our district. We have to look at it, we have to deal with it. So we need to make sure the community is involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burrows, for five minutes.
I wanted to recognize my SAT instructor, who was an excellent SAT instructor. Please consider joining the resident teacher program, sir, who are phenomenal instructor. Also want to recognize Delegate Jas Lewis, we grew up in the Young Democrats together. Oh, I know you did, but he's my friend. And- And he is doing an excellent job in Annapolis. He's actually the vice chair of the Democratic House Caucus, and is doing a great job empowering the young delegates in Annapolis, so thank you. Can you please go to slide twenty-three? How many schools are in cycle one? And how many are in the north? Oh, your mic's off. I'm just trying to establish this for the record.
I'm sorry.
How many are in the north?
How many are in the north? Oh, I didn't count them up.
Well, I can count it for you.
Twenty.
And how many are in central?
Ten.
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 And out of those ten, five are in Bowie. And then how many are in the south?
Seven.
Seven.
So, you know, we are a large county, a diverse county that believes in equity, and in cycle one, which is thirty-seven schools, twenty are in the north, ten are in central, five of which are in Bowie, and then seven are in the south. This list is not acceptable to me. I was not included or consulted with this list. This list was not created in a transparent manner, frankly. And you can, having community meetings through different parts of the county or public hearings is very different than an open and transparent process. And if our thought process is that, because in the southern part of the county, we don't have overcrowding, we don't have that, but we, what we do have are very dilapidated buildings. And our students deserve high-quality facilities, just as the schools in the north, and just as schools in the central. And so I'm very concerned about this problematic list, and I would like to work with my colleagues on the budget committee, colleagues in South County, where, you know, basically it's us two, Mr. Valentine, myself, and Mr. Wallace, and Ms. Williams, and Ms. Queen, and really all of my colleagues, to create a more equitable list that really reflects the needs of the south, because this, in South County, we already believe that we're the stepchild of the county. And this list gives me reason to believe that, we believe that as a board, and I know we don't. And so, if we're going to stand for equity, I hope that we can work together as colleagues between now and the final vote, to create a more equitable list.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Mr. Wallace, for three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I share those sentiments, Mr. Burrows. To the administration, if I could just request, I see on the slide twenty-three, two District Seven schools, Longfields Elementary and Benjamin Stoddard Middle, they're in the planning phase. If I can just get, as follow-up, just an update on where those two schools stand. It doesn't have to be right now, but just in writing in the next couple of business days, I appreciate that. I know we're going to be talking about a very important school to the community I represent later today, about Sutland High School, and I want to thank so many folks that came out. I know the senators and delegates and civic association presidents and community members for coming out. We had a recent community meeting, I want to thank the administration for showing up at the Sutland Civic Association meeting. But a lot of folks, at the conclusion of that meeting, and then emails after, and phone calls after, did share grave concern about the timeline of where we are, and I have to say, this is one of the most patient communities in the county, they've been fighting for this for twenty, thirty years. Just give us a brief update, I know we're going to talk about it a little bit more later, but a brief update on where we are with Sutland before tonight's vote, and the steps afterwards in regards to this proposal to the state and the county.
So we're completing the feasibility study, and that's what you're looking at tonight, and you'll see the numbers that are projected for how much it might cost to replace or renovate the school. It is a high amount of money, and that's something to consider going forward, but we will put it in the next CIP, and we'll put all of the schools in the CIP and see what happens.
So, and going back to our round one, where we talked about what schools do and do not make the list, I know the list is not going to be finalized for another six, eight months, I get that, I won't beat that dead horse. But if overcrowdedness is not the only weight in the category, in the criteria to be on the ACF list, and if state rate capacity helps us in the state formula, wouldn't South, Central County schools be better suited for ACF, and then we do the traditional route for overutilized schools in the north?
That is one of the reasons why Sutland was listed last year in the FY nineteen amendments.
And I am very thankful for that. I just wanted to, I know some of our colleagues will chime in, maybe a little bit more southern than me, but I just wanted to raise that concern, or maybe as a point of interest, when we are looking at the list in the next six to eight months.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Murray, for five minutes maximum.
Did I hear correctly, the P3 list will be finalized in six, eight months? Is that what I just heard?
So the RFP will not have the list of ACF or P3 schools in it, and that's due to come out at the end of May, we're looking at. And so the RFP will come out in July, August, sometime around then, possibly more August, September. It really just depends on how long the qualification part takes.
So the list of schools that'll be in the P3, by the end of May?
They will be in there, yes.
And that'll be for a board vote?
Not the end of May, no. Whenever the RFP comes out, which is at the end of, it's probably going to be close to the end of August, early September.
Then that list will come out simultaneously? And the board will vote on that list?
The board will vote on the actual contract that we award, whoever the private company will be. So we'll have to present to you, when we do our CIP budget in the fall, what the list is, because at that point, we have to make a determination as to what's going to the state and what's coming locally.
One of the things that the teams will do is they'll weigh, right, the schools that we present to them, so we'll have a series of schools, but they might say, well, these five is what I want to do. Another team might say, you know, these six is what I can do for thirty million a year, or what have you, and that's what you'll be voting on.
So the board's going to vote between different finalists that have...
No.
No.
No. What we're going to try and do is we're going to select down to a finalist, and that finalist will have, will provide us a value for money, a value-for-money assessment of what they can actually build for what we can afford to build. We'll try and select based on a lot of different factors, other than which schools we're talking about. It's also going to be, there are a lot of different criteria that will go into the evaluation of that entity. So it's going to be a very long, very drawn-out process. It's going to be involved a lot of different designs, it's going to cost a lot of money for each one of the ones who are presenting to do this. So, right now, what we're trying to do is, we want to make sure that there's a list eventually developed that gives us some variety and an ability for them to give us a biggest bang for our buck type analysis.
So I get that you all are doing tons of due diligence. What I'm, think I'm hearing is that this is eventually just going to come to the board, as this is the firm that we think is best, and that we're recommending for just an up-down So we're, so the board is just going to, you're expecting an up-down vote in terms of not only the vendor, but which schools are going to be selected, and we're kind of, we may or may not be, like, out of the loop on what that's looking like. I mean, to me, that's quite concerning. I mean, as everyone here knows, my top priority is making sure that High Point High School gets built, and it sounds like I won't even know whether that's going to be in ACF until you all have selected a firm, and we're kind of at the end of the road, and it's time to go, because we need to build.
So I think there's a couple pieces there. One, as I said it before, each fall, if I'm correct, we submit to the Board of Education for approval, a CIP, and the board goes through two, in September, you go through two rounds of CIP. Sean, I might be wrong, but I don't think we anticipate an actual award for a contract until when.
I'm not sure when that award will be, because, again, we're trying to figure out how long the RFP process is going to take.
Unlike, similar, or would it be after we present, most likely after we present our CIP budget?
It's possible, yes.
But either way, the vendor is deciding which schools. I mean, we're picking the vendor, but the vendor is proposing the schools. That's what I thought I heard.
Yeah, they can't decide, we have to present to them different options. I think, we present to them different options, and they tell us what they can do, you know, again, slightly different than what we normally do. This is a vendor providing, what, four to five-hundred million dollars on the front end, so they're going to tell us what they can do with the money they have, and then on our end, we have to determine what the contract would be and present to the board, as we do every other contract.
Sorry to catch you to the time. Is the school system going to pick, pick these lists of schools based on this board? Like, not this, like, is this board going to decide the schools that are in ACF, or is this board not?
Yes, you will.
Okay. Feasibility study, is that a prerequisite, just the same for ACF, like it would be for traditional?
No.
No.
You do not need one at all?
We do not need it.
I had, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Ms. Ahmed, for three minutes.
Yeah, so just to piggyback off of what Mr. Murray was saying, when are we going to decide that? Is that the August meeting, when we're going to decide which of the schools? Mr. Murray had asked, does this board, will this Board of Education pick the schools that are going to be used for P3? So I'm asking, when will that happen?
ACF, because I don't want to confuse ACF from P3.
Oh, sorry.
So for ACF, yes. So what happens is, is that a company will say hypothetically, I can do four elementary, one middle, and one high, based on the thirty million that we're going to be, they're going to be paid over that time period, the thirty-year time period. And then based on that, we then have to figure out which schools fit into that category. Did that help?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. And then, being the District Five representative over parts of Mitchellville, Upper Marlborough, and Bowie, I feel obliged to clarify that there are four schools in District Five on that list, and that's one out of nine, and we have nine districts. But I completely understand, and I value Mr. Burrows's point to equity as it relates to capital programming, and the need for that. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Mr. Valentine?
Just getting back, my point around our temporary, temporaries, is there a way to rent them and have a third party, or the person we're renting them from, maintain them?
So, that probably wouldn't be the more efficient use. Right now, the way the county is treating temporaries, they're treating them more like it's permanent, right? So now we're going to have to run water to them, in some ways, stormwater management issues, fire alarm issues. You're seeing some of our budgets go up on a lot of these projects, because we're now having a lot of requirements that previously weren't added on to these projects, now being added on to them. So we're seeing, so trying to do them as rentable temporaries probably wouldn't be in our best interest in the long run, because of how much money we're going to have to put into them to begin with. So, and I don't think that there's going to be, these aren't temporaries that are necessarily going to move until you build an addition and take them away.
I know that sounds good, but there are students who are going in those buildings, and they've been there for years, right? And so, my children don't go to school, but if they did, I would want to fight just the same. And so even though we don't envision them having been permanent, they, in many cases, are. And so I think we kind of need to function in that way, and if there are ways that we can, I mean, the ACF model of putting the onus on this other party to maintain the building was, when I first presented it to me, was clearly an appeal. The question is, in the event that we could do the same for a temporary, and you have it, and you move it, and you have a bevy of them, and you move them around as necessary, but they're not permanent, but to ensure that they're getting maintained, because it doesn't seem like they are.
I guess we could, we could do a cost-benefit analysis and determine if it's possible. The discernible difference in between renting them and purchasing them, purchasing them has been a better financial model. So we are kind of financially stressed, so the question of whether or not one will work over the other, it's sort of a P3 model, I'm not quite sure, but we could do an analysis to find out.
So based on your calculation, are we factoring in maintenance? Are we maintaining them? You know, I mean, so you said it's cheaper to buy them than to rent them, but if you're only factoring in the cost of the purchase and not on the maintenance, then clearly it's not going to be more cost-effective to rent them.
I can speak to that. I think what we're seeing, I've been evaluating the old temporaries, they're really outdated, we got to bring a lot of them back up to code. So, all the new temporaries now are going to be what you call high-class temporaries, and because of that, you have to meet the DPI, our county DPI standards, which are requiring a higher level of standard to meet that, which means you're getting a better, a better temporary, which, for our students, I think that's what we deserve, that's what we want. With that, there is a cost that comes with that, a higher cost. So at the end of the day, when we start looking at improving our temporaries across the school system, I think the issue is, and you bring up a good point, is it better to buy them and maintain them and provide maintenance, or is it better to look at leasing? I don't think, since I've been there, we've looked at the leasing prospect, it's not that we can't, but the cost has went up on temporaries, because the standard is higher.
Thank you for that response. I want to encourage board colleagues, this has been a very rich discussion. Please, Mr. Wallace, the committee, continue this discussion with our colleagues, and Dr. Gosin, and your staff at the committee level. Thank you so much for your presentation, and we look forward, the board looks forward to the Operations Budget and Fiscal Affairs Committee continuing this discussion and coming back to the board, and following this very carefully. Colleagues, now we'll move to, I want to yield the floor now to Dr. Gosin, for the introduction of items five-one through five-three under our consent agenda. Dr. Gosin?
Items five-point-one through five-point-three requires board approval of Proclamations Observing National Caribbean American Heritage Month, National Charter School Week, and Building Services Personnel Appreciation Week.
May I have a motion to approve items five-one to five-three?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, that we approve five-one through five-three. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. I will now yield the floor to Dr. Gosin for an introduction of items six-one and six-six under the budget consent agenda. Dr. Gosin?
Items six-point-one through six-point-seven requires board approval of the June 2019 expenditure requirements, Sutland High School feasibility study, final acceptance and payment for work at Francis Fuchs, change orders for work at Largo High School, ratification of the ASASP Unit Two and Unit Three contract, and approval of the FY 2020 compensation improvement for employees paid pursuant to the executive and Board of Education's salary schedules.
I'm seeing some lights, is there a request to separate out, and we can approve the others? Which ones do you want to separate? Six-two, thank you.
Six-four, five, and seven.
Colleagues, your vote, request is on six-one and six-six.
And three.
Six-one, six-three, and six-six. Those in favor of adopting or passing six-one, six-three, and six-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no.
Point of order, I don't know that we had a motion on that.
So moved.
Properly moved, is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded, that we pass six-one, six-three, and six-six. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. We'll now move to, specifically to six-two, approval of Sutland High School.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I apologize, even if, I don't know, they're probably, Robert's Rules of Order on this, but since you passed six-six, and we do have members of ASASP here, and there's, this is the full one ratification of their contract, it may be opportunity for the ceremonial signing, and we can do the pictures, and then, I know they got a lot of people here who might want to...
Please, if we could get through that process, if there are representatives here, we just so appreciative of having reached this point. Do you have representatives here?
Principals.
Oh, principals, anyone else who wants to come forward?
Colleagues, join us. Colleagues, join us.
Let's, let's bring him to the next executive session.
Ms., um, Ms. Reed. If there's a brief comment you would like to make, you may do so or otherwise we just thank you so much. Thank you. That's a valued trait, but go ahead.
Mike, Ms. Reed.
Okay, I would like to thank the board and Dr. Golson for your support. Like to thank Mr. Burnett for one of the smoothest negotiations that we've had in the twenty-eight years that I've been here. We really appreciate it, glad we got through. Thank you much.
And thank you, Ms. Reed, for your twenty-eight years of service and we look forward to twenty-eight more. Thank you. Thank you, um, and so we dealt with that. Now we will move to six two, colleagues, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and colleagues, I would like to, uh, welcome you to Sutland High School night. It has been a, a labor of love. This, my, my time, um, in advocating for Sutland High School predates my service here on the board back when I was working in Annapolis for former, uh, State Senator Ulysses Curry. We go to many, uh, many Sutland Civic Association meetings and town halls and District Heights, Fordsville. Um, and one of the main issues that came up was the construction of a new Sutland High School. And it predates, um, many of us on this board and the inaction, a couple colleagues talked about it earlier today, the inaction of a lot of elected officials on this board and the lack of funding has put uh, extreme generational long delay on a high school that truly needs it. But we've gotten to a good point and I know there's more steps to come. But I do wanna recognize a few folks, I think some left and some are still here, Senator Joanne Benson, Delegate Jas Lewis, uh, former president of the Civic Association, Ms. Karen Anderson, I thank you so much for your years long of advocacy for this school. Andrew Freeman Middle School as well, as well as representatives from the architect firm, I see them here as well. Thank you for your work and commitment, uh, to, to the Sutland District Heights community. Uh, one of my, uh, one of my greatest prides is working with, um, uh, members of the Sutland community, not only on Sutland High School, but also Drew Freeman, uh, Middle School. I know that school's gonna become a little bit later down the pipeline. And colleagues, I ask for your favorable vote on this agenda item. I have this, uh, this talking point, which I'm sure is true, hopefully it's, I've been saying it for three years, um, that there are not many schools in the county that pull from every school board district, every county council district and every state legislative district, and Sutland High School is one of them. So this is not just a District Seven issue, this is not just a central or south county issue, but you have constituents. Even if they come from the very tip-top of this county, they go to Sutland High School. And we must recognize that. When we have a world-renowned CVPA program and the students have to dodge splinters in the wood when they try to dance or act, that is a problem. When we have stage lights that cannot light up correctly, that is a problem. When you have microphone cords falling down from the ceiling and auditorium seats that have no cushions, that is a problem. Sutland High School should have been rebuilt many moons ago, but we are here now and we must proceed forward now. Colleagues, I plea- I, I beg of you for constituents, not only in the Sutland zip code, District Heights zip code, but all throughout this county, please approve this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Ms. Ahmed, on six two.
No comment.
No comment. Colleagues, the, um, the vote is on six two. Uh, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes have it. Colleagues, we'll, we'll now move to item six four. Um, is that what you wanted to speak on, Ms. Ahmed?
Yes, you can package six four and six five together.
Very good. Um, the comments now, colleagues, are on six four and six five. Ms. Ahmed.
Uh, point of order, do you need a motion?
Please, please, um, a motion is, is in order for six four and six five. It's properly moved and seconded, uh, discussion, Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you, um, I'm a little, I don't know, when I saw both of these, uh, items on the agenda, I was very concerned because what I saw was twenty-five to thirty percent increase from the contracted amount, um, in the form of these change orders. And when I was looking at it, I was looking at six point oh four, that was five hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of a change order for a fire alarm system because that system was too new to be connected to the old system.
Ms. Tate.
And my question was, oh, you can put me at four or whatever to decrease me. And my, my question was, is there no review of existing structures by engineers in our system before we go out to bid? I feel like this was something that could have been looked at and found.
So this is a result of some, some requirements of DPI and changes in the rules and regarding, so it used to be that we could make changes to a building and we didn't have to upgrade every aspect of the building for the fire code. We could make a change and we didn't have to do that. That's no longer the case. And this, and this happens, uh, this project was planned, i- it's a FY sixteen project. So it was planned years ago, um, well before FY sixteen, probably FY fourteen, FY thirteen before it got done and, uh, started getting worked on on it. So the rules have changed and that caused, as you'll see for both projects, that caused a significant change in the scope of the work. We had to add that scope because it wasn't part of it. We're now adjusting the way we, we bid out these projects or at least design these projects to add those things because they weren't a requirement before.
And I can understand that, I just, um, it's concerning to me because I feel like if you did, uh, if there was even more meticulous, I know you all do meticulous reviews, but even more meticulous review on what are the materials involved and, uh, looking at this, I, in my head, this could have been a foreseen circumstance instead of unforeseen. And then for six point oh five, that's three hundred and ten thousand dollar order, simply, I, well, simply because we didn't account for the room getting hotter when computers are in the room. And so, and in my head, that's also a foreseen circumstance and I'm wondering, do we have checklists in place to, to kinda, to look at these things? I, I don't know.
Could I respond first? A- as far as the fire alarm change back in FY sixteen, I'm familiar, I worked, worked with DPI. There's been a lot of change in standards since then and because of that, they require you to tie in the new with the old and sometimes the, the new doesn't work with the old. So I looked at this change, trust me, I had concerns originally, but I know DPI processes standards have changed substantially and a lot of these costs were trying to catch up to the changes, so that's one thing. Uh, I can't speak on the, uh, cooling system, so I'm gonna ask Sean to respond to that piece on that because I had a question about that also.
Okay, Mr. Mattler.
This was a change in the type of lab that it was, um, and so initially they thought that they had enough, um, air handling to cover it. Uh, and then after it got into process, they realized they did not. Uh, I can't speak to the, the design of this system at the time it was designed, um, but we're trying to resolve the problem as it is right now.
Okay, and I thank you both for your explanations. I don't know that I'll be voting for this today, um, but I appreciate the way that you're working hard to resolve these issues. And, uh, in the future, please, I, I don't wanna see any more change orders. And I know the change orders that come before ours are over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so just decrease that amount as much as you possibly can. If, I don't know.
I will point out, Ms. Ahmed, that if you look at our, this month's change order report, three, three of our four change orders are for reductions. So we do have change orders where we reduce the amount.
I like that.
Yes.
Thanks.
Mr. Burrows.
Could you go into further detail about the heating, uh, issue that Ms. Ahmed raised?
This was a, a lab that was used in one way and they thought they were considering the air handling for a lab. So when it became a computer lab and you have a lot more heat production, uh, it caused, you're generating a lot more heat and so.
So did they not know it was gonna be a computer lab?
I don't know, and, and this is like a FY sixteen project, I don't know what they were thinking at the time. I, I don't know.
How do we prevent this from happening in the future? Because I'm very concerned.
Well, we didn't have a mechanical engineer on board at the time, we do now. And so our mechanical engineer, who's heading our, uh, Don Holton, who ends our design department now, has been able to address a lot of these things. A lot of our projects that were spec before, we're pulling, we're revamping, we're adding things to them because the scopes weren't complete enough. And so part of the reason we're doing more planning now, rather than, uh, than just going out and doing a project or, or something like that, we're doing a lot more overall scope projects. We're also developing standards, um, we just put those into place, design standards for these types of facilities. Yeah, so I'm sorry, but that's what we're doing now. We're trying to do a lot more planning, we do have.
More planning. Uh, and then, um, Mr. Stanton, you mentioned that, uh, DPI's regulations changed significantly. Uh, and because the regulations change, we have a change order of how much? And when they're changing regulations, are, are we? Could you send me that process? It doesn't add up, it doesn't make sense to me and I would like to understand it.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows. Uh, colleague, um, senior, the questions, your vote is on item six four and six five. Call the roll because I think there's opposition. Call the roll, please.
Ms. Ahmed.
No.
What was your vote, Ms. Ahmed?
No.
Thank you, thank you.
Ms. Boozer Struther.
Aye.
Mr. Burrows.
Abstain.
Ms. Eubanks.
Aye.
Mr. Montero.
Aye.
Mr. Murray.
Abstain.
Ms. Queen.
Aye.
Ms. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Valentine.
Aye.
Mr. Wallace.
Aye.
Ms. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Thornton.
Yes.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. Colleagues, uh, please turn your attention to item six seven. Is there a motion?
So move, second.
It's moved and properly seconded that the board approves item six seven. Any discussion, Ms. Ahmed.
Yes, my question is, um, who negotiated this?
So six point seven is negotiated, um, in the same that we would do for ASASP. So if you recall, um, I brought up two weeks ago in closed session that the process that we have used in previous administration is that executive and board level staff would receive, um, compensation improvements based on similar to ASASP two and three. What had not been done in the past is something written. We have been doing practice, but not procedure. And so what I did do is create a procedure so that it would be aligned with what our practices have been. What that does do is allow that whoever resides in this seat here cannot go outside of the negotiated agreement process, um, which had been done in previous administrations.
Okay, so that, um, administrative procedure, I think it's forty-one seventy-seven, is not based out of board policy, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
We actually, so let me clarify.
Go ahead.
We actually don't have any board policy as it relates to compensation because technically it's connected to negotiated agreements. With the exception of this case, we have approximately a hundred employees that are not affiliated with any labor partner.
Okay, I think my concern is that with the procedure not being tied to any board policy and procedures being created by administration, it's a concern to me that executives are creating the procedure to increase pay for executives. It just seems very confusing to me. Um, and I would much rather, as a process in the future, I know that this has been practiced for, um, a while. I would like to see in the future, uh, more of a board role in being, um, on the other side of, of a table so we have kind of a negotiation going on.
So now that we have a board policy committee, um, I think that'd be great. I do wanna make sure that we know and I probably can provide that list as we began to analyze our own administrative procedures, there are a large number of administrative procedures, procedures that exist where we don't have a board policy. Then there are also lots of board policies that are outdated and that need to be updated and so that they're consistent with administrative procedures. So I'll be glad to share that document with you so that the committee can begin to, um, make those revisions just like we are in the process of doing as well. We have approximately, I want to say ninety-two administrative procedures that we are updating, um, because they are out of date.
Okay, um, I would, I'd love for the record to show as a follow-up item that, um, Dr. Golson, if you agree, to have all of the, i- in addition to have all the procedures that don't have any policies attached to them, come specifically to the committee. Um, and me, Ms. Boozer Struther and other members of the policy committee can look at those as well of, as those outdated policies.
No problem, that's what Ms. Welch has been working on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, my colleague, and that's a excellent first charge for your committee that you chair, so thank you. Colleagues, the vote is on six seven. Uh, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no.
No.
Uh, there's one no, um, the, the ayes have it. Colleagues, we will now turn, um, to Dr. Golson for an introduction of item seven one under governance. Dr. Golson.
Item seven point one requires Board approval for renewal of Turning Point Academy Public Charter School Agreement.
Is there a motion? It's been properly moved, uh, that, um, Dr. Golson's recommendation regarding the renewal of Turning Point be approved. Any discussion? Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
So, um, I just wanna sort of revamp or go, return to what we talked about last year. We had a number of requirements that the school, the charter school was to implement during this year. Can we have a discussion on what has happened since ye- last year to implement those requirements?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Williams. With respect to what has been done since last year in June, there were four items that we were tasked with solving, um, with TPA, Turning Point Academy. Um, team members that would include Ms. Liz Saunders, that would include Dr. David Reese and Ms., um, Loretta White Khalid have followed through on each of those. I'll have them to share specifically what each item detail.
As you begin to share, please recognize the time that, uh, Ms. Williams has.
Dr. Reese, one of the line items that we were tasked with was to.
The creation of a climate survey. Um, we gave a survey to all staff members and we received two hundred and sixty responses from parents that you have documentation for. And there were major trends highlighted in the survey briefly. Um, the staff and parents wanted more increased financial transparency. They wanted to have a school building that was suitable, that had a suitable learning environment for the students and they wanted to have organized board meetings that were meaningful and useful. And they wanted to have organized board meetings that were meaningful and useful. Um, those were some of the, the negative trends, and the positive trend was around high culture. There was a high celebration of it, praise for it, and they wanted to see it continue.
If you could share the professional development plan, please.
So, the professional development plan was submitted in August, but when we went for the site visit review, it was not fully implemented throughout. And some of the things that stood out were the high tenants, the five words, the five principles, and that the board truly believes in them. But some of the things that were still lacking were things around two-way communication, were things around, one of the things that was constantly coming up is that the county has underfunded TPA. This was said at a parent meeting, this was said in several communications, and that was very interesting to me, because with our charter schools, we are very equitable. They receive the same per pupil allocation across the board. None of my other operators are ever saying to me that they've been underfunded. And so that was also something that made us, as a group, question how money was being spent, where it was spent, why it was being spent the way that it was. Another thing that was coming up continuously was just around communication and lack thereof. One of the things that it's really important when you have a governing board is that you come to a decision. And this is a board that I attended a board meeting, I reviewed their materials, and oftentimes, there was, at certain times, failure to have a quorum. So they could not vote on a decision, and there were several things that they needed to be decisive about, particularly around the facility. So the charter office would be able to support them in whatever decision they made. This was made difficult by the lack of a quorum and the lack of a vote. And if a board is not voting, they're not really speaking. So, that was one of the concerns that we had throughout the year.
And so I appreciate that, because I, I, you know, the discussion that we had last year, we had specific ideas on what we wanted to see this year to make a decision. And this recommendation, it's about, and I guess this may be to Dr. Golson, this is about keeping the school open, but having a new management company oversee the charter? Would the charters remain the same, and there would be a new management group in, in place? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Can I, oh, can I just say one more thing? One of the things about that, that it was really important and really relevant that came out in the site interview is that the teachers and the principal administration team have worked very hard. They are a four stars, they are a four-star school despite of the lack of leadership and governance from their board, and it was very important that that's honored, that hard work that they have.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Ahmed? Ms. Ahmed?
Yes, so, my question is, when was the last time we actually closed a charter in PGCPs?
I'm gonna have, um, I believe it was possibility prep.
It was, it was possibility prep, I don't have the year.
Okay, and how long ago was that?
Thank you, I think it was about six years ago that possibility prep was closed. It was open for one year, and closed the next year.
But we can get that definitively, four years, but it's been some years ago.
But we've never closed a charter that's been in operation for this long?
But keep in mind, too, we're not talking about closing the charter school.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're talking about switching the management-
Right, we want to keep the school whole, the school. But it's the, that mid-level administration, the governing board, where the challenges are.
Okay, and so I'm not too familiar with charters. Um, I, I'm wondering, is it normal to, to have one management group out, move out with the school system, then managing the charter for you? Is that something that happens?
It has happened in other jurisdictions, in other states, yes.
Okay.
So that, so that the process doesn't necessarily disrupt families and displaced families. And that was one of the things we walked away with last year, with the recommendation to close the school because of the lack of the, the governance, uh, part of it. We, we stepped back and we realized the school is doing a fantastic job, an awesome job, without the benefit and the lack of governance and leadership.
And so I guess, is, how, are there models for success where one management system leaves a charter, and then another one comes in and is able to perform? Have we had, uh, history of that in our school district, or?
Not in our school district.
What about neighboring jurisdictions, or?
In, 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 we've had other cities, like in Baltimore City, I think we've had some operators to come in and take over other schools.
Okay.
The District of Columbia, they actually do, so, you know, they have a separate system, but I do know that DCPS and their charter school board may often call an operator when they're closing a school to come in and do kind of an emergency overtak- overtake the school for, until they can actually issue another RFP. So that, it does happen in the region.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, just to clarify, it was twenty-ten when, uh, possibility prep was closed. I know very intimately, I was a member of the board of, possibly prep wouldn't close, not, not when it opened, but I was asked to come on towards the end.
I'm sorry.
I beg your pardon, uh, I reclaim my time. But, um, that instance, it was all open for a year. And so that, that board, that entity was not given, um, a, a lot of time by, by the board. Um, but that was a year, and I, I know this is different. Um, I think to the point around funding, um, and to say that other boards have not complained about charter school funding, and that to me, that's not an issue. Um, understanding that, um, in the state of Maryland, charter school operators do not get, uh, equal funding compared with traditional public schools, it's just a fact. But whether, uh, that's not a principal discount, that's, that's a state issue, and if those have a problem with that, then, uh, we can talk about that. But, it's my, my also, the point of clarification relates to, um, other operators taking over charters. That is something that happens, it's pretty commonplace, um, around the country. Uh, and there are operators who have done that, and done it very well. Uh, I guess, my question, uh, is around the process which we got here. And just, can you speak again to if, the, the initial conversation with the operator about the issues that you put in hand, and then what steps we put in subsequent to give them opportunities to address the issues, uh, and what their responses were to those?
Glad you asked. This journey really began years ago, before the renewal application was submitted in two thousand and seventeen. As far back as two thousand and thirteen, site visits were conducted on an annual basis. Uh, and in that site visit, we had the opportunity to de- to address focus groups of the school. Those focus groups consisted of the staff, the administration, parents, students, and the governing board members. On each of those site visits, from two thousand and thirteen until most recently in March, the governing board, for all practical purposes, were absent from those site visits, those performance reviews. In two thousand and six seventeen, when we conducted the site visit, only the chair and the, 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 uh, executive director, who is not a member of the board, was present for the site visit. So we did not have a quorum then to even interview them during the site visit. And it's just been a pattern and a practice of this board for all of these years. When the site visit is completed, a complete and detailed report is provided to the school that highlights the strengths, the challenges, and particular, in some cases, recommendations. At each juncture, each year, when that report was provided to the school and to the governing board, the principal was diligent in contacting us for follow-up, and she also put things in place to ensure that when we came back the next year, it would not be cited as a recurring incident. Never once has the board ever come back after a site visit to even discuss or challenge what was written in the port, reports. So, we, we've been very, I think we've done our due diligence with this board in sharing with them for a number of years what our concerns are, and they have been documented in the site visit reports.
And I, I appreciate that, and it's, in the, in the time I do have, I'm, I'm gonna quote, uh, Mr. Burrows. Uh, Mr. Burrows has said in the past that we should hold our public schools to the same level of accountability we do our charter schools, particularly, um, if we're talking about their school buildings aren't up to code. We just had an entire conversation about many of our buildings aren't up to code. And so I think we just need to be mindful of that. Um, it's no mistake that I'm a supporter of school choice and option that there are certain parents who don't, who can't wait for us to get our act together with certain schools, and they should be given the same freedom that I have to make a choice about where I send my kids to school. At the same time, they deserve accountability like, like anyone else. Uh, and so I'm, I'm mindful of that. My last question to you is, can you talk about the selection process? In the event that this does pass, what the selection process would be for an operator who would potentially take over this charter?
I think ideally, uh, and, and this probably is going to require a lot more discussion, but ideally, the process should include probably an RFA, where we would put out a request for applications or a request for proposals, with a clear understanding of the scope of work, is that this is, in, in essence, like a, a takeover, a turner, turnover, um, turnkey of a school. And with every intent, uh, the language should say that this school and staff should stay in place. So there should be somebody that's ready to step in, has the capacity to address the major issues that this, the board has faced, and also to be ready to develop a school for them.
Thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Queen? Ms. Queen?
Um, I, I just wanted to add a couple, um, I'm sorry to hear this, because my grandkids attended there, and I have grandkids that still go there, but I'm reminded of the story, Who Moved My Cheese? And you guys will hear me, um, say that all the time. And as I think about that story, for all of you who don't know about it, um, just to give you a clarification of the story, it talks about mises, and it talks about some paying for the cheese and how others didn't. But to round it up, I wanted to say, um, with this story, this, is where the story split at, and this is where I see Turning Point is splitting at, where we haven't accepted the loss of the cheese, and we need to go on into the maze. So what I see, what's happening is, it is a loss there, it has been oversight, unfortunately, and oversight is affecting our children. Um, as I'd heard the conversation earlier, to hear someone say that, um, we are working on it, we are getting better, our children can't wait. There has been a lot of problems with our school system now, they have been working on it. The time is now, our unions say it all the time. The town, time is now, we have to make sure that everything is in place, and it's not fair to our good, uh, to our children. For life not to be made, it, it demands us at a level of risk and adventure. The time is now for us to make sure that every child get a fair education. The time is now to make sure that every child is in a quality school. The time is now for us to make sure that we have people, leaders, in place to make sure this is happening. We can no longer, for any our school, whether it's charter, whether it's public, whatever's in this county, we can no longer, um, do things at the backs of our children. We can no longer do that, because they are our future and our next generation. So, I am sorry that a, a lot of people are hurting because of it, but believe me, when change comes, sometimes change, just like in the story, is for the better and a new beginning. And sometimes, we have to start all over to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Mr. Valentine?
One quick question around the facility. Um, so in the event that someone responds to the RFP, we choose a new vendor, will these students be going into the same building, or will that vendor be responsible for finding a new building, or will we find a new building for those students based on the condition of the building?
May I?
We had several that had, had suggested and recommended that op- opportunity for some months now. It was actually supposed to have occurred a decision being made during the months of November and December. It did not occur as intended. Months went on, we went on to January, to no avail. So at this point, on May second, to my understanding, a decision was made, um, that they would not be accepting the building that we had offered, which was Middleton Valley Elementary School.
And, and so, again, any event, if we find a, we find a vendor to take over the contract, will that vendor move, function in that building that you referred to? What's it called again?
Middleton Valley.
Middleton Valley, thank you.
So, so to your point, Ms., uh, Mr. Valentine, yes, so two things. One, yes, our plan, per the board action tonight, is to actually look at moving those students from the current facility they're in. I think it's in a church facility, and moving them to the vacant Milton Valley, which is our property. Um, the operator would have the opportunity, just like TPA had the opportunity, to maintain in that property, or to seek other, um, opportunities when and if the operator comes onboard.
So, i- in that RFP, whatever they charge us, we were, they're responsible for up, upkeep of the building, or is that our own, at least during the, the life of that contract?
So it would be like, they would be paying us for the use of that facility, which, when we provided them, did a walkthrough with them, went through the cost per square foot, it was approximately two hundred thousand dollars less than what they were paying for the church.
And this is Turning Point you're referring to? I'm referring, so, so in event that, yeah, so the new contractor would have to build that into their budget?
Correct, but once again, it's still a savings in our facility.
Thank you, colleague. Uh, Mr. Burrows, and then we'll vote.
It was, it's a significant savings. Um, I think it was more than two hundred thousand dollars for a significantly larger school with a big field and an amazing neighborhood. Um, and so I wanna thank you, Dr. Golson, for, uh, even putting that possibility on the table, because what we were doing was really a favor, trying to help them succeed, because we know how expensive buildings are. Um, and they were paying over five hundred thousand dollars for a closet. I, I wanna thank, I see Mr. David Reese here, thank you for taking on the challenge, um, and working on behalf of the school district as our liaison. Um, I appreciate all the work that you did. I wanna thank you both. Um, I also wanna thank you, Dr. Coley, for, um, keeping your word and, and staying on it, staying on it, um, pretty relentlessly and being very transparent. Um, I see teachers in the back. I've been to several of your faculty meetings over this past year, and I wanna thank you for your service. And I'm so sorry that you've been placing this flux for way too long. Um, and so, I'm hopeful that this action shows you that we've heard you loud and clear, uh, and we're very committed to finding a facility, facility that's suitable for you. And, and I also wanna thank the Turning Point, uh, board and, and, and group. Um, is, I have no doubt in my mind that every member of that board and that, that sort of family has done everything that they could do to uplift that school and to make it work. Um, and I don't think anything, if this were to pass, I don't think anything would prohibit you from, uh, applying to that RFQ, or whatever we're calling it. Um, but I think this is a smart move, I think this is the right move. Um, I know that the system did not come to this move lightly. There is a ton of data to back this decision up. Um, and so I, you know, I'm, you know, I'm ready to support this. I do wanna mention, Mr. Valentine, I did vote to keep open possibility prep. Checked the record ten years ago.
No comment.
Thank you. Uh, as I call on what appears to be our final speaker before the vote, I, I do want to comment, uh, Dr. Golson, um, I guess the first charter in our county was opened in two thousand and thirteen?
Six.
Oh, six, okay. And I've been away from the board for a long time. Um, I want us to take this opportunity to, um, en- enhance, uh, under, um, Mr. Montero, the Academic Achievement Committee. I think the board would want your committee to, um, spend a little bit more aggressive time on charters, their performance, uh, the value to the metrics that we're using, so we don't come to this point, and when we do come to this point, we have a baseline. Because, uh, charters, obviously, uh, public charters always make a distinction between the other charters and public charters. They are, um, adding to the diversity of opportunities that already exist in our county, but we must make sure that we don't emerge like other districts have emerged, like the District of Columbia, um, Chicago, and other places, where charters have not had what I consider to be a positive impact. So I would ask that committee, certainly, I'm sure the board would expect the Academic Affairs Committee to take a look at that. Um, Mr. Murray, and then colleagues, we can vote.
Feel the need to rebut that point. Uh, as a charter school teacher, kindergarten and first grade, special educators, um, won't go neither here nor there, um, so I'm teaching my kids to read and do math. Um, but anyhow, I just had a, a clarification question for administration. Um, is transportation gonna be provided in interim year?
The same services and funding that was provided where they are currently will continue. Funding.
Right, so, I, I assume this, we'll just like, it'll be district school buses as opposed to the private service that they had before?
So they have a private service and will continue that?
Okay, okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Um, and I've asked to be invited to your school, remember you haven't invited me, so.
I have invited- I have invited you several times. I'm there every Monday to Friday. We have an extended school day, so I'm there seven to four. You can come through anytime.
Thank you, colleague. Thank you, colleague. Ms. Tate, please call the roll.
Ms. Ahmed?
Aye.
Ms. Boozer Struther?
Aye.
Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Eubanks?
Aye.
Mr. Montero?
Aye.
Mr. Murray?
No.
Ms. Queen? Ms. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace?
Aye.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Thornton?
Yes.
I have it.
Thank you. Colleagues, I will now yield the floor to Dr. Golson for an introduction of first reader items, 8-1, 8-3. Dr. Golson.
Items 8.1 through 8.3 requires board approval as first readers.
Thank you. A motion is in order. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve as first readers, items 8-1 and 8-3. Those in favor, please say aye.
Oh, one question.
Oh, there are questions. I was trying to get to that.
Try it.
At 10:15 at night, I tried. Mr., I'll call on him last, I'll beat him up. Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you. Just two quick questions for administration. For item 8.3, when will the public hearing happen?
May 15th.
May 15th. And will the board action summary change to reflect one option after that?
Yes. We're waiting to hear from the community.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then we'll, we'll propose one of those two based on community input.
Okay. One more thing. Are, are you going to poll all of the parents and staff and students at those schools?
So, they'll be present there. And we also do email so that if you're not publicly there, you can still submit which option you want as well. So, we'll use the public comment from the 15. We'll use the public comment, you know, take notes from that. And then we'll also receive the written ones for those who can't attend.
Okay.
And we'll use that.
If there's some way to quantify those qualitative notes or we put out a quant?
In the past, when I served in the CLO role, we did. I would write a narrative, a little brief narrative of what each person said and then use that to quantify.
Okay. That would be helpful in decision-making for this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ahmed. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I just want to bring some clarity around this, this whole process of the Akakik Boundary Task Force. We've been having this discussion for several years and the community felt as though the administration would just bring a decision and say, this is what we're going to do. Out of several meetings and several discussions, one of the community members at Akakik suggested that we have a boundary task force to look at this whole entire process to make a decision about boundary changes. If you remember, I mentioned earlier, at one time, there were 29 schools on the closure list. And one of them is a school that is directly adjacent to Akakik. So, had we closed that school, we would have increased the, the number of students that needed to go to Akakik. Through this discussion, through the task force, we had Akakik Academy, PTA, and Hallie, the president of Akakik, he was here earlier. We had PTA members from Fort Washington Forest and PTA members from Potomac Landing. Fort Washington Forest and Potomac Landing feed into Akakik at sixth grade. And so, for several months, for nearly a year, we had experts come to the, to the task force and talk about transportation, construction, development, programs, and all the, the parts and pieces that go into making a decision about changing a boundary, which we all know is a hard decision when we're talking about moving students. At the end of a, almost a year-long process, the community recommended an option. The option that they recommended was option one. And the staff came back and they looked at that option and they gave another alternative, which is option two. The, all of the community members that were a part of the Akakik Academy Boundary Task Force, they looked at option two and considered it. Several discussions, a lot of meetings, and they still fell back to option one. And so, as you all review these, these options, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. But this has been a long process and I think we're ready to put this thing to bed.
Thank you, colleague. Ms. Queen, Mr. Burrows, and then Mr. Valentine, and then we'll vote. Ms. Queen.
My questions are concerning Legend Public Charter School. Do we know what location Legend Public Charter School is going to be located in? We don't know any of that yet? Okay. No other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen. Mr. Burrows.
I just want to congratulate Legends. You've worked so hard on this, blood, sweat, and tears over a number of many, many years. You're going to be wildly successful. So successful that I would love for you to come to District 8. So, please consider that. And then also for 8.2, colleagues, I raised concerns during the discussion about the 20 schools in North, 10 schools in Central, four in Bowie, one in Lanham. In South County, we include that as a saying, Bowie, Lanham. And then seven in South County. And so I hope, you know, I'm going to vote for this today just because it advances it to the next, to the second reader. But I hope those who are willing and able, we can come together with a consensus document for a second reader.
Thank you, colleague. Mr. Valentine.
Mr. Burrows stepped on my comment. I was going to recognize Natasha James and her team for coming out tonight, being available. Any board members who do have questions about this before second reader, her, her team have been very amenable to comments and support from us and questions. And so, I expect the same between now and the second reader. But I will congratulate you in advance.
Thank you, colleague. A motion, a vote is in order. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. Let the vote reflect unanimous consent by the board. Follow-up items from April 9, 2009 board session are posted on board docs. And follow-up items from April 25th board meeting will be available upon receipt. A motion to approve actions taken in executive session on May 2009, May 9, 2009. Those most, those items include labor negotiations, legal matters, personal appointments, student appeals, interim CEO report, internal audit, personnel matters, administrative matters. Is there a motion? It's properly moved and seconded that the matters taken up in executive session be approved. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no.
Abstain.
A motion to adjourn is in order. Second, it's been properly moved and seconded, no questions, no comments. Those in favor, please say aye. Have a good evening. Thank you.